Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, August 24th. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Mala?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Sofa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Saron?
Here.
And vocalsinger? Here. We have 12 out of 14.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Jenny, it's Abby Beck. I'm here now.
Great, thank you. 13 now.
Alderman Baron did let me know that she will be late to the meeting, but she'll be online. So I'm gonna make sure we catch that when she shows up. All right, item number two is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the BATV recording, and anybody that's online, make sure that you are muted unless you are talking. Item number three would be items to be removed, added, or changed. We only have one change I know of. We're going to move item number 13 up to 6A. Let's keep the bike stuff all together. All right, and item number four is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is anybody here tonight or online with anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, then we will move right on to item number five, which is presentation on progress update on the water treatment plant rehabilitation project.
Actually, we determined that we were going to move that this evening, and so we will have that at our first committee of the whole meeting in September.
Okay. That is the second thing we'll remove. Right, up next will be item number six, which is presentation by the Batavia Bicycle Commission. We have a few members here.
Go ahead, which, you want to start with your slides or your page?
Slides first, okay.
Sounds good. I have to stop sharing my screen, sorry.
So, in March, we at the Batavia Bicycle Commission presented to council our recommendation to replace the city's Share the Road signs due to the unclear message conveyed by this sign. We recommended these signs be replaced with either "Bicycles May Use Full Lane" sign or the Illinois State 3-Foot-to-Pass sign. Over the past several months, we have been working with Gary Holm at Public Works to identify roads where signage should be updated or added. Using the guidelines set up by Ride Illinois, we evaluated each road and determined which of the two signs would be appropriate. Since our last presentation before you, we have found out that updates have been proposed for the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or MUTCD. This includes an update to the wording of the "Bicycles May Use Full Lane" sign. The updated sign would read "Bicycles Allowed Use of Full Lane." The Federal Highway Administration has proposed this change for consistency between message and sign type. The method for amending or updating the MUTCD is a multi-step process resulting in an updated manual approximately every five years. This current process is nearing completion, with the final rule expected in spring of 2022. The Bicycle Commission feels that the wording of the updated "Bicycles Allowed Use of Full Lane" sign states a much stronger message as to the rights of cyclists on the road, and therefore recommends waiting to install these signs until the FHWA completes the amendment process and creates the final rule for the updated MUTCD. While the Illinois State law 3-Foot-to-Pass sign is currently in use throughout Illinois, it is not officially included in the National MUTCD. This sign has been formally adopted by the Illinois Department of Transportation, and the design used is based on the National MUTCD Committee's recommendations. This sign also carries an official designation number of R4-I102. The Illinois supplement of the MUTCD lists commonly-used Illinois standard signs, but not every official sign is listed, including the Illinois State law 3-Foot-to-Pass sign. Kyle Armstrong, engineer of traffic operations at IDOT, has provided the following official statement: "The Illinois Department of Transportation confirms that the R4-I102 design for the state law 'Motorists Must Give Bicyclists 3 Feet Minimum Clearance' sign is in compliance with the MUTCD and may be used by agencies within the state of Illinois." Furthermore, the MUTCD allows agencies to develop specific word message signs that are not included in the MUTCD. The Illinois State law 3-Foot-to-Pass sign does include a symbol, but it is a standard symbol for bicycles, which is included on other MUTCD standard regulatory signs, and this sign was based on the current National MUTCD Committee's recommendations. The Bicycle Commission continues to recommend the use of the Illinois State law 3-Foot-to-Pass sign on appropriate roadways throughout the city. If council is concerned about using this sign due to its absence from the National MUTCD, the current proposed updates include a bicycle passing clearance sign be added for use by states that have passed a law specifying a specific passing distance. Again, the final rule for these updates are not expected until spring of 2022, and the Bicycle Commission would like to see these signs in place sooner. I guess, any questions?
Guess what you're asking us is whether or not we want to go ahead and change signs prior to having the rule change done. Do you think you'd want to use these signs in multiple locations, or replace ones that are out there, or add these to...
These would replace the Share the Road signs.
Okay.
So the current, or the proposed updates to the MUTCD would also remove Share the Road signs from the official manual, and they want to be using different signage that's more strong in the message to the motorists and bicyclists.
To bring clarity, also, so everybody understands. I'd like one sign out there that just says, you know, that bicyclists have to obey the same laws when they're in the middle of the road, too. That, you know, I know that that's something that's really education-based, but there have been a lot of instances that I've been made aware of or seen myself where bicyclists feel like they don't have to stop for stop signs, and especially when it's groups or packs of bikes together. And that's still a big frustration that we hear about all the time. I mean, I'm not going to speak for everybody in the council, but I hear it constantly and see it constantly. So, you know, and I don't know that that's going to get to the point where we have to have a sign for that, but the reality is, is I think there's as much of a problem with that as there is with people not giving room for bicyclists. I mean, I drive every day on McKee and Main and Wilson, and I see a lot of people really go out of their way to go around, especially on Main Street, to go around bicyclists. I'm happy with that. I'm really, you know, I think what the changes we made on Main Street, I think are good, and I think people pay more attention, especially when there's too many signs on Main Street.
Alderman Beck has her hand up.
Abby, go ahead.
Hi there. Thank you, Bike Commission. Thank you all so much for bringing this back to us, and I am in full support of getting these signs up at the soonest possible, soonest possible time. I'm not waiting until spring of 2022 when full approval gets out there. And I think there is probably a more robust conversation that we should have and could have about cars and bikes and all of the differences that there are between the modes of transportation, and how they should be treated differently when they're on the road, because there's a lot of differences there. I don't know if that's something we're prepared to have tonight, but I think it's something we could bring back. We could have the Bike Commission back and have a really great conversation about what makes sense in terms of rules and ordinances and standards and expectations for both drivers and bicyclists to keep everybody safe.
Alan, we did check with the city attorney about what would be the effects on, for instance, tort immunity liability in the case of utilizing the sign before it was fully adopted by the IMUTCD, and it was their opinion and recommendation not to post the signs until the formal recognition by IDOT. The letter provided would provide us with protection against claims from IDOT, but if the signs were wrongly installed, but not necessarily for third parties, such as bicyclists and pedestrians, who would still have the ability to sue the city based on the signs.
What would the signs give, like, what would the case look like?
That the city was negligent by installing signs that had not been formally adopted by the IMUTCD, that until such time as they are formally adopted, that they are not fully recognized as the appropriate markings for streets.
So, a bicyclist could be going down the lane, get hit by a car, and then the cyclist would sue the city because the driver hit them, and they were told, they were given the expectation that they could be safe on our roads?
I'm not sure of what the fact scenario would be under which the city would be alleged to be negligent in that regard. So I'm not exactly sure what the fact pattern would be, whether it would be something from a pedestrian or bicyclist, or potentially from a motorist who is in some way found liable themselves because they followed this sign. But it was, again, I'm just reiterating the advice of the city attorney.
And formal approval is in the spring, you're expecting?
Formal approval for the National MUTCD. However, there is a provision in the National MUTCD that allows local agencies to create their own signage for their own local laws. And this state law "Motorists Must Give Bicyclists 3 Feet Minimum Clearance" has been adopted by the state of Illinois into the Illinois MUTCD. It is not a word-only sign, which is what the federal MUTCD typically outlines as leeway for state or local agencies to create signage. However, this was based off of the National Committee's guidelines that they're putting together in this update session. So they, the state modeled their sign off of what is to be expected in the update. And it has been approved, and it is in use throughout the state in various locations. And Kyle Armstrong at the, at IDOT has given, provided the statement that it is Illinois-approved for use on Illinois roads.
Go ahead, Abby.
Sorry, I meant to put my hand down, but then I left it up. And I want to reiterate, too, that, and I know that I've come down on MUTCD before in other conversations, but there is a nationwide push from both pedestrian and bicyclist groups that the MUTCD gives us coverage in terms of lawsuits. Like Gary will say, engineers and lawyers use this standard. It does not actually create conditions for safe streets. So there are many conversations that we could and should have about traffic calming and safe streets for all modes of transportation, that this is, this is recognized as not the bible for safe streets. So it will cover, it's CYA, it's not necessarily making our streets safe for everyone.
I guess the one thing that I would want to know, I mean, we have our own sign department, so we can do this, but if we're going to change the rules in six months or eight months, and then we have to go back and replace the signs, I don't know that it's a great idea to go out and put a bunch of signs up and then have to take them down and replace them with something else, especially if it's a sign that's quote-unquote "better" than this one. I mean, we've got enough signs in town. I don't need to have us make more.
Right, but this sign is based off of the National Committee's recommendations, and so this should be fairly reminiscent of what the final ruling will be.
Right.
And it is going to be, it's a general passing clearance sign, because different states do have different passing minimums. So there's, it allows leeway for the states to modify to their own local laws.
Does anybody else have any question, Mark?
Yeah, I'm kind of with Abby on this one, that I, this, I can't imagine the scenario, but I'm not a lawyer, nor am I litigious that I would come up with a scenario that would, like, put us at fault because we displayed what the law was, which the law is 3 feet. So, I mean, it's an information sign. If it's unlikely to change, and this is approved by the state, I don't see why we wouldn't put them up. Besides, how long is it going to take us to do it? A month before we'd have them up?
Sure, but if, what the final sign that is adopted by the state of Illinois, if it changes, then we have to ditch all of those signs and make new signs. And while the MUTCD may not, at any given point in time, be reflective of what the best practices are for safe streets, it certainly is exactly what the aim of that document is, safety. And so if, sometimes those federal regulations and state regulations haven't caught up with the best practices yet, and this is one of the cases where a, a good practice, an improvement in safety is working its way through the system, but if we act in a way that is in, not in accordance with the established safety guidelines that have been approved by the bodies that are charged with enacting those, you do open yourself up for liability, because if the accident occurs, it is very easy for the attorney to allege that you chose not to follow the guidelines that have been set for safety. Whether or not you agree that those are the best, you're in the position of saying that the MUTCD should not be followed because it's not the safest, and I...
I guess I'm confused. I'm reading this, unless, unless the information on the screen is wrong, this is an official sign, right? This is an approved sign.
No, it is not.
This is officially approved by IDOT.
By IDOT. We live in Illinois.
And it's in compliance with the MUTCD.
Yes.
That's what it says written.
The IMUTCD has not yet been changed to reflect this sign as part of it.
This specific sign would never appear in the federal MUTCD. They're gonna, they're proposing a generalized version of this sign. That can be tailored to each state who have a law in place.
So does the IMUTCD have this sign?
According to Kyle Armstrong, he said that the Illinois supplement lists regulatory signs that are specific to Illinois. However, they don't have to list every sign. It's just the most common signs. So this sign isn't in the official list, but it has an official designation number, and official renderings for size and layout. It's an official sign that is officially used in the state.
I had thought earlier in the presentation that there was mention that in the spring, that this sign is expected to become part of the IMUTCD.
So, this sign, "Bicycles May Use Full Lane," is currently in the MUTCD, and they are proposing to change the words on the sign that will go into effect in the spring. This sign will be updated if approved through the amendment process. This sign, there, like I said, the general bicycle clearance signage is in the proposal and should be added to the MUTCD if it makes it through the process in the spring. So the general guidelines for a sign like this would be in the MUTCD.
So these signs would be replacing ones that are out there today?
Correct. All Share the Road signs would be replaced, and we would use one of these two signs based off of which one is appropriate for the road conditions.
Okay, so, and the Share the Road is still approved now?
It is, but it is in the amendment to be removed from the MUTCD. So if that gets approved, it'll no longer be listed in the manual.
I guess I still feel like we don't want to duplicate, make signs, and then have to go back out and replace them in six months.
I don't think we're going to have to replace them. This is the, what the...
What IDOT says they'll use, but if they decide to follow the other one when they change it, then do we have to change them? Or do we leave ourselves open for liability if we don't change it to what they updated it to?
It's only seven months, and that time's going to be the winner.
Yeah, and we've got signs out there already to identify that bikes get to use the road. So I'd be tempted to wait till we have guidance on that, rather than have to make a sign, have it up for six months, and throw it away, and put another sign up, because that's what we'd be doing.
Seems like an unlikely scenario, but Nick has his hand up.
Alderman Saron has his hand up.
Nick, go ahead.
No, I was just going to support what you said, Alan. It's seven months. We're all on the same page here and heading in the right direction. I don't want anyone to feel like it's a loss if we wait. We're all heading in the right direction, and of those seven months, four months of them are winter. I think it's in our best interest to get a good grasp on all the agencies and where it's heading, and wait till spring to make a final decision, knowing that we're all in support of this and heading in the right direction. I think we're letting time, a short period of time, kind of block our, our vision.
Anybody else online or in the room want to comment on this?
I'd like, I like the idea of putting the signs up right now. Like you said, I don't want to spend the money. And I know the, the federal one gives the state the maneuverability to change the sign, so we could end up with these, but if there is a change, we then have to tear the signs down again. I mean, like I said, we've got seven months. The signs that are in place now are legally, legally for us work. So I would like to see us wait until they make the final approval, so we are not making signs and then making new signs, because we're going to have to deal with the budget issues from that later on.
Alderman Beck has her hand up.
Abby, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think you guys brought this sign, these signs to us last time you were here. I don't remember how long ago that was, and I was hoping we were going to make the change already, but, but wintertime, people still bike. Wintertime, the streets fill with snow, and the curbs, you know, the lanes get tighter. The bikers have to move in naturally to get out of the snow. And so by the same logic that we're all using, you know, if I get hit by my, if I get hit by a car, and there isn't a sign that tells a motorist that they need to give me 3 feet clearance, aren't we all in the same amount of liability that we didn't have the sign up to tell the motorist that they needed to give me more space?
No, that would be the qualified immunity that we would have by selecting signs that were deemed appropriate in the MUTCD.
So again, we're covering ourselves from liability, but we're not actually making conditions safer.
Well, I don't think anybody wants to try not to make them safer.
No.
I think we just want to not repeat sign production and installation.
But what do we think the odds are that that's really going to happen? I asked that question of the Bike Commission, who have been talking to IDOT and talking and reviewing the MUTCD, what we think the odds of that are.
Well, I have been in brief communication with Kyle Armstrong, and more than likely the sign will not change regardless of what is approved in the final MUTCD updates. Again, this was modeled after the National Committee's recommendations, so the state took the design very seriously when they were putting this together. So most likely, this will be the sign that is used.
Leah, go ahead.
Alan, do we know about how many signs we're talking about and the budget of that?
I don't have those numbers with me.
Gary is not here tonight, and we do have those numbers available. I just don't have them today, but...
But we could get our hands on...
A lot of signs, yeah. And, but we are happy to begin a plan to, we can even put into the budget the number of signs that we need to change and the money to do that, and have the plan to do it as soon as we hear that it has been adopted.
Okay, Keenan, did you have your hand up again?
No.
Okay. I have a question. Okay, when we talk about the number of signs, one of the caveats that Kyle has here in this memo is in relation to where to put signs up.
Exactly.
Do the signs we have up now that we would replace fall in line with locations where recurring presence of bicycles and/or history of bicycle crashes, or are they up indiscriminately?
I wouldn't say that they are up indiscriminately, because we have identified the, we have identified specific paths through our city for bicyclists, and so the current signs are installed along those pathways. But you point out an important distinction here to say, feel free to use the sign, but you have to have done some type of investigation of where they might be warranted under these conditions. Another thing that gives us a little bit of pause because we haven't done that investigation, and I also want to reiterate or say how great a job that Jen did in investigating all of the facets of this, and how much we appreciated the work that she's done, and we're fully ready, when that sign gets approved, to recommend to install these signs. We do think that it gives much more direction, both to motorists and to bicyclists, about what the rights and obligations are with how to travel in the lanes of traffic.
And I, I won't speak for the rest of the council, but I'm 100% behind getting the signs up. I just want to make sure we're not doing it twice.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's my feeling. And I think the Bicycle Commission has been really good about helping us with identifying places where they think that, you know, there's issues, and we get different signs or more signs up. I think that's happened over the past decade, that that's happened quite regularly.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is that we get input from the Bicycle Commission, because that's what they're there for, and that's what we base a lot of this off of, is the work that they do to be able to help us understand where those things need to be.
Mm-hmm.
So do we want to just wait until we have, you know, an actual approved sign that we don't think is going to change? I mean, this is approved by IDOT, and we could change them, but then that leaves us open to having to go back and redo them if they happen to change the sign.
I would still love to see some numbers, some actual numbers.
Sure.
On this.
Yeah, I mean, if it's 10 signs, or if it's 50 signs, there's a big difference there.
Yeah. In fact, next Tuesday's committee of the whole meeting, there will be a discussion of the funding for some capital projects that do not yet have a funding source identified, and we could bring back this project as well, to make sure that we put a placeholder in the 2022 budget for this. And we could bring back, um, this project as well to make sure that we put a placeholder in the 2022 budget for this.
Okay. Do we have money in the 2021 budget if we decided to go ahead with this? Has there anything been identified to do signs like this?
No, there's no line item in the budget. However, we could do a, a phased approach to it. If there were signs that are recommended to be done this year, there is sufficient, um, uh, space in the budget, let's say, um, to add this into part of our program this year and, and do it in phases of this year, next year, and what we may need to wait into the future to do as well. Maybe it's something that's ongoing.
I think you're right. I think we needed to have the numbers before we make a decision on it.
We can bring that next week.
Okay. Anything else from... Or is it John's turn now?
Sure thing.
Uh, at the same time that we were here about the signage, we were here to accept the bronze award for bicycle-friendly community. At that time, we did not have the report card. So, we wanted to come back with the report card. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate, Amy Moore is really the one responsible for gathering all of this and she needs to, uh, receive credit for all of that. So, I just wanted to give her the kudos. Um, this is really interesting, uh, the kind of the, we discussed this in the Bike Commission and it, I think, some of the things that I wanted to point out, the, the bike-friendly community is essentially, uh, based on the four Es. So, if you look at the category scores, engineering, education, encouragement, evaluation, and planning, we all felt really, uh, a little up back because our scores were so low out of 10. Um, and what I felt, what we also felt was really interesting is that we're real close on education, encouragement, and evaluation and planning, but we're lacking on engineering. Engineering is one of the things that we're talking about with the signage. Um, and I think we have some solutions, but I, I'm, you know, I just wanna kind of bring it to everybody's attention that as a whole overall, I think our community is behind in these areas. So, then if we step, I'm gonna, and you, I think, have copies of all this. But what I found really interesting and goes into further depths is if we look at the key steps to going to silver, which is the next level. We have a complete streets policy, so, and as well as the design manual, but they're asking for increased in that. We found it, so I'm just looking down the left side. We found it really interesting that they wanted more high-quality bicycle parking. We tend to think that they're not, that may not have been represented well enough in this because we think that the bicycle parking is good, but we're gonna reevaluate that. Where we really felt, um, that we needed to focus as a commission and as a community is on the right-hand side, the data that's reported on its network is incomplete. We've known this since we started the commission. We don't have true good bike counts, good commuter counts, good, you know, but we're not really sure how to accomplish that. We need good data so that we can come to you and present and say, this is exactly what's happening. So, we're gonna explore that further. We're welcoming ideas on that. We're welcoming, you know, what direction should we go with that? Um, the other one, which I think addresses all of our concerns at the very bottom there, exa, expand bicycle education opportunities for adults. We got high scores in education because of what we do in the schools. Every fifth grader gets bike safety. And we've done that for years and it's a really good program. It's really, it's, you know, they enjoy it, we enjoy it. But we don't, we haven't been able to do a good outreach program for the adults. We've talked about it. I met with Chief of Police, but we can't seem to kind of get it. How do we do it? And I think that's not just a Batavia challenge. I think it's a national challenge. Um, so, again, that's one that we've talked about. We need some direction or we need some help. So, I'm gonna turn to the bottom because it continues on there. And it says, okay, the bike, I, I, I guess I'm jumping ahead, but the process of creating a new bicycle master plan. Um, that is really the key, I think, to starting to put all of this back together again. Because I think what, what we're starting to find is that we've got some wonderful resources, Jen, for instance, and other commissioners that are moving forward and doing a lot. But we really need the next oomph or level to take us, because we're working off of a document that's 15 years old. We've achieved most of the low-lying fruit in that document that we can do as a volunteer group. We need some professional input and direction as to where we can go in the future. Um, and I think that's part of that. And I think then it falls into the bicycle count program, which is the statistics, the education, all of that. I think they take into account this report and then help move it forward. Um, so, I'm happy to answer questions. Um, we're happy that we are a bronze-level community, but we, we really felt like, boy, we barely squeaked by, haha, on re, on looking at this.
Yeah, I was looking at some of the numbers as you scrolled through that. And there was, the one that stuck out to me was like, I think it's our percentage of ridership is less than 1%.
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a lot of people that bike, but I don't know how they counted that to go with 1%.
Yeah, we don't have a good data collection service. You know, we don't know how many bike commuters we have. That's, that's one that I'm also a, a pet peeve. I'd really like to know that. Because I know that there's people that are commuting into the industrial park and that are commuting to the train station and stuff, but we don't have those numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And those help us in securing grants and other things. That's part of the reason that I think that data collection becomes very important.
And did we get a copy of this? I don't remember seeing this as a...
I emailed it.
Okay. I'll go back and...
You should have it.
I'm happy to give copies to...
Hey, does anybody have any questions for John?
Alderman Beck has her hand up.
Abby, go ahead.
I do. I wondered if the Bike Commission sometime, maybe next spring or summer, um, uh, would maybe take us on a bike tour of Batavia, show us all the, the high points and the low points. Um, and the mayor does these fabulous downtown walking meetings sometimes for us and we talk about different issues downtown. Um, but it's hard to really appreciate what a bike commuter goes through and, and what these numbers mean unless we've actually seen it firsthand. And if we're only driving through town, then it's likely that we're only really making decisions and representing drivers. So, it would be great, um, if other Aldermen were interested, um, if you would be willing to kind of tour us around on two wheels.
We would love to.
Well, let us know what works for you and, um, I'll try and work through a few more around here.
As long as it's not 95 degrees and 95 minutes.
Yeah, not 90.
I'm okay with that.
Thunderstorms, yeah.
Thank you, Abby.
Anybody else? I would second what Abby said. I think that would be a good idea for us to go out and see, you know, some of the issues that we've got in town, you know, instead of maybe having a town meeting one night. Maybe we, we do that like we've done with the mayor's walks. Let's do that and get out and go through some of the bike paths, some of the streets that we've approved and said yes to and see them in actual reality out there.
Gladly. We'd be glad to put that together for you.
Be up for that.
Look forward to it, actually. Anytime for a bike ride. Any, anybody else?
And I won't bring a Harley, so it'll be okay.
Thank you again for your time this evening. Appreciate it, Al.
And now we'll move right to item number 13 that we moved up to 6A, which is Resolution 21 dash 87 dash R, authorizing execution of a contract with Active Transportation Alliance and Ride Illinois for the creation of an active transportation plan for the city of Batavia, Illinois. Laura?
Sure. Um, so, development of an active transportation plan is actually part of our strategic action plan for 2021 to 2023. The existing bike plan, as we just heard, was developed in 2007, so it certainly is ready for an update. But as part of the strategic action plan, council decided to make this an active transportation plan, taking into account other non-motorized, uh, forms of transportation. Um, in deciding who to work with, the, uh, Batavia Bicycle Commission, there are some members who were on board when the first plan was created. And at that time, they worked with, uh, Ed Barsati of Ride Illinois. And since then, he's worked with more than, uh, 20 other communities in development of their bike plan. So, it was actually back in 2019 when the Bicycle Commission recommended that we, uh, work with Ride Illinois to update our bike plan. Um, we put that into the 2020 budget, but as with many items that we had planned to do that year, it was put on hold due to the pandemic. Um, and, and since then, we have added this active transportation element to the project. So, previously, we had budgeted, um, $13,000 for the development of an update on the bike plan. Um, staff would now like to recommend that we work not only with Ride Illinois, but also another organization, Active Transportation Alliance. In 20, uh, 2018, they awarded Well Batavia a grant for a campaign to count the number of customers who biked or walked to our downtown businesses. Active Transportation Alliance also has a Complete Streets Coalition who visited downtown Batavia and, um, uh, visited our One Earth and the other amenities of our downtown that we have for bicyclists and pedestrians. And they are known as, um, an expert in the area of helping communities to create safer, healthier environments for walking, biking, and transit. And so, um, we asked Active Transportation, uh, Alliance as well as Ride Illinois to develop a proposal for us, which was attached to, uh, my memo on the agenda. And it has a detailed budget that can be found on page eight. The active transportation services amount to $19,188 and Ride Illinois services to $5,700 for a total cost of $24,888. We're recommending approval of Resolution 21 dash 087R, authorizing execution of an agreement with Active Transportation Alliance and Ride Illinois for the creation of an active transportation plan for the city of Batavia.
Hey, does anybody have any questions here in the room or online? Is this gonna dovetail with the, the Bike Mission going back through and basically rewriting our plan or updating the plan that we have? So, this will fit right in with that?
Absolutely. That's, that's the idea, is that that bicycle plan will be replaced with an active transportation plan. So, it will encompass more aspects of non-motorized, um, travel in our community.
I think it's something we've talked about for quite a while, um, that, that's, you know, you can't just look at one facet of transportation, um, especially as we try to re, do things in downtown that change the way traffic and transportation get handled. So, I think that's very important that we, we do that and think about how to make it more cohesive and connected. Um, you know, we've talked about some of the, the bike lanes that we've put in that really are not connected to a lot, are connected to some things, but not to everything because of the fact that we can't do everything at once.
Right. It will help us address some of those issues that, uh, John just identified, such as engineering and planning, um, to improve the connectivity of our, uh, bicycle, um, pathways through our community and also pedestrian pathways through our community.
Anybody online have any comments? Mark, go ahead.
Um, so, it's over budget. Where is the extra money coming from?
Um, we don't have any indication that, um, my budget for professional services will be over budget this year at this time. So, due to lower-than-anticipated professional services, I still have capacity within my budget for, um, to handle the additional charges that are anticipated with this plan.
Okay, thank you.
You asked a question. I wanted to know where the money was coming from too. Okay. If nobody else has any comments or questions on this, I will make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 21 dash 87R, authorizing execution of contract with Active Transportation Alliance and Ride Illinois for the creation of an active transportation plan for the city of Batavia, Illinois.
Back in.
Motion by Wolf, second by Beck. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to 0.
All right, thank you.
Alan, I'm gonna hang up for the next one.
All right. That's a record reflex that Alderman Beck has left the proceedings for this item. Uh, item number seven is an approval of a Class D1 restaurant, all alcohol liquor license for Boqueditos Cafe Incorporated located at 11 North Batavia Avenue, Unit 109, Batavia, Illinois.
Alderman Chantet? The, uh, Batavia Police Department has conducted an investigation and background check, uh, determined whether, uh, the business Boqueditos Cafe located at 11 North Batavia Avenue, um, uh, should be subject to a C, liquor license.
Hold on a second.
It's Chief Dikey. Chief Dikey, can he mute?
Yes.
He'll be fine once he walks out the door.
He's gonna say, all better? We're good.
Uh, the, uh, the results were they found no reason to, um, exclude them from receiving a license. Um, I guess I would ask, is the applicant here tonight have any, anything to say?
No, Randy's not muted, so if he starts talking when he's outside, it might come in.
Open up for discussion, anyone? Uh, if not, I would, uh, recommend that we approve the council, uh, this Class D1 liquor license, uh, for Boqueditos. Motion second, any additional discussion? Uh, click on the roll, please.
Ask, um, who the second was?
Knapp.
Knapp, thank you. Okay, Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck absent and Knapp?
Aye.
Motion carried, 12 to 0.
It should be consent, but if we have an opportunity for the applicant to be with us on Monday.
We can't do liquor licenses on consent.
On consent, cannot go in, sir. Thank you. Okay. Believe Alderman Beck is back in the...
Hi, Anne. Thanks.
Thank you, Abby. For item number eight, which is Resolution 21 dash 37 dash R, awarding a downtown signage program grant funds to Craft and Smoke at 20 North Island Avenue. And Scott here on this.
Alderman Wolf, I got this one. This is Anthony.
All right, Anthony.
All right, so, uh, this is, uh, Resolution 21 dash 037 dash R. And we are award, uh, looking to award a downtown signage program grant to Craft and Smoke. They are located at 20 North Island Avenue. Um, the total project for their sign is about $4,200, which will exclude permit fees. Um, so, they're looking to obtain a grant of $1,000. Um, we do have Joe Shulo, uh, on the line. Uh, he called in. Um, so, uh, Joe, are you on? Joe?
Anthony, do you have the ability to, uh, is he one of the attendees with just a phone number?
He's one of the phone numbers on here.
So, uh, you'll need to give him the allowed to talk.
Yes. All right, Joe, you there? Joe? He mentioned earlier that he was having some trouble due to the storm, so he had called in.
Okay, well, I don't think we've got any other info for the owner. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Typical sign grant. Um, this one's only about, what, 20, 20, 25% of the, the cost of the actual sign. Okay, hearing nothing. Um, I will make the motion to recommend to council Resolution... Okay, hearing nothing. I will make the motion to recommend to council Resolution.
Joe, are you there?
Yeah. The power's not going to go out, so I apologize. I'm back on the laptop now. I am here. Thank you. I do apologize for the mix-up.
Not a problem.
But, yeah, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity for the sign grant and, you know, the, the traffic is great in our location and, you know, things are, are becoming more of a success daily. So, you know, once again, I want to appreciate all your support over there and everybody who's a part of it.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions of the owner? Okay, we're going to go ahead and I will make the motion to recommend to council Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven dash R, awarding a downtown signage program grant funds to Craft and Smoke at twenty North Island Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Saron. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carried, thirteen to zero.
All right, thank you.
You.
All right, up next is item number nine, which is Resolution twenty-one dash eighty-six dash R, approval of a downtown improvement grant for fifteen East Wilson Street, Ware Equity Partners LLC for fire sprinkler system.
Good evening, City Council. Hopefully, I'm short, so hopefully this will work with me. Shannon, back before you with my first official agenda item. Glad to be here this evening. I've been working closely with Dan Marata with Ware Equity Partners on a downtown improvement grant for improvements at fifteen East Wilson Street. He is requesting funding assistance to make fire sprinkler improvements into that building. The previous tenants, as you're probably well aware, are Gaetanos and Verita. And the fire sprinkler project is intended to kind of pave the way for a new tenant there. John Hamel of Pal Joey's and Melissa Mono of Sidecar Supper Club are joining forces and planning to open a tapas restaurant at that location, but need to bring it into code compliance with the sprinkler requirements. The downtown improvement grant that is being requested is twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. The total project budget is forty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, with the low bidder from S.J. Carlson. All of the proposed improvements meet the minimum eligibility requirements for the downtown improvement grant and certainly fit within the scope of the program. They will add safety and value to the property, and staff is recommending approval of Resolution twenty-one dash zero eight six R for the grant in the amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. The applicant is here this evening. If the council has any questions for him.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I, I support this, but I'm, I'm just curious, why was, was, why wasn't it in compliance by the, the previous tenant? I'm, I'm shocked that with the work that was done by Gaetanos, that it wasn't brought up to compliance.
We, as the city council at the time, allowed a variance to not put the sprinklers in at that point.
It was, they were given a five-year period of time within which they.
Oh, that's right.
All the sprinklers, and it was, it, it ran with the, the land, so in the.
That's right, okay.
Yeah.
It's all in.
Anybody else? Mark?
I was just going to say, I support this. We've talked about this before, that we have some historic buildings downtown, and we don't want a fire to start, nor do we want it to spread. So whatever we can do to help and save the rest of buildings in downtown.
Yeah, and I think it's very interesting, because as my memory serves me right, the, the numbers that were quoted the last time when they asked for a variance on that were much higher than what this is actually costing today. So I'm fine with that. I, I, I think this is a great thing. Anytime that, you know, we can provide safety in a building, especially in old building in downtown, I think that's a great thing to be part of. And I'm really excited after I got through reading this memo last week. I went and sought out one of the two people that's moving in there to get a little more information about it. I think it's going to be a real interesting addition to downtown.
Yeah, I'm excited for it.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Anybody online? Nick, put your hand down, please. Okay.
I'm not done. Just kidding.
Anybody else? There's nobody else. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution twenty-one dash eighty-six dash R, approving a downtown improvement grant at fifteen East Wilson Street for Ware Equity Partners LLC for fire sprinkler system.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Uwer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carried, thirteen to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will, you're here. Do you want to say anything about the, the business?
No, we're just very excited for the opportunity, and, you know, I think it's going to be a great addition to downtown Batavia. You know, we purchased the property in February. It was a long battle through the bankruptcy corps and whatnot, but I'm a local Batavian, so just, you know, excited to have a property in our backyard. We had numerous interests in the building. Kind of felt we didn't need another Italian restaurant slash pizza joint. That's just my humble opinion, but I think this concept's going to be great with, with local people who have deep roots in the community, so.
I like it when the owner gets to make that decision, not the Facebook keyboard artist. Thank you. Do you have a proposed name?
You know what? I'd speak to John on that one. He, he mentioned it to me, but I, I don't recall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, up next is item number ten, which is Avenue Marketplace, eighteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-four, McKee Street, Michael Douglas Randall Road Resources applicant. And we have a whole list of ordinances to go through. We'll start off with ordinance number twenty-one dash forty-four, amending the comprehensive plan, land use map for General Commercial for eighteen ninety-eight McKee Street. Scott, are you going to start on this one, or?
I think Joel is actually going to be presenting this one.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Rather than list these off one by one and then explain each one out, give an overview of, of what's being, of the ordinances and resolution in front of you this evening. I believe the Avenue Marketplace Development Team is with us, so they can provide some detail on exactly what is being proposed. So with that, this project was brought to the Plan Commission on, on August fourth. Before I, I get to that, I just wanted to note that there is one ordinance to consider amending the comprehensive plan land use map. There's another ordinance to amend the zoning map, to rezone the property at eighteen ninety-eight McKee Street. That's also the subject of the comprehensive plan land use map amendment. And the property would be going to General Commercial, both for the comp plan land use map and for the zoning district. The ordinance to amend the zoning map also includes adding a plan development overlay over the entire property for the proposal that's being considered this evening. There are two conditional use permit ordinances in front of you. Each one is for a drive, a different drive-through restaurant on the property. One would be for Starbucks, the other would be for Chipotle. And finally, there is a resolution to consider a preliminary and final platter subdivision to create the development lots, the stormwater management lot, and a separate lot for the access aisle. And again, on August fourth, the Plan Commission reviewed this. They conducted a public hearing. This proposed development would continue the development that was contemplated when Raising Canes was approved in twenty nineteen. As I mentioned before, the development team is here this evening, excluding the Menards Detention Lot, which is just on the east side of that access aisle. This proposal would cover the remainder of the former Avenue Chevrolet property. At the Plan Commission hearing, four area residents voiced concerns about the removal of the existing east property line landscaping along the Sierra Mills subdivision. They noted this landscaping provides screening and buffering that could help against noise and lights and pollution that would be generated by activity on the neighboring properties. They also noted that this would add traffic closer to the Sierra Mills subdivision with the proposed access aisle that would extend down to connect with the Great Escape property to the south. The residents also noted general added traffic to neighborhood streets and also a potential increase of litter in the area because of the new businesses. The neighboring Great Escape Regional Manager Frank Gaudio was at the hearing, and he noted that, that access driveways connection to his store's property could potentially interfere with his three to four weekly deliveries, and that drivers going through the properties and his customers would need to navigate many turns through the parking lot. The Avenue Marketplace Development Team at the hearing explained that removal of the existing landscaping along the east property line is necessary to construct a detention facility. They noted more landscaping can be added along that east property line for screening and for buffering. The development team did commit to work with the Great Escape manager to address his concerns regarding that driveway connection. They also stated that the property owners, or the Commercial Property Owners Association, can use a third-party service to pick up litter. The commission echoed the concerns that had been voiced during the hearing. The commissioners felt more landscaping and/or even a screening fence can be added along that east property line. They also agreed that the applicant, applicant can return to the commission later for approval of that east property line landscaping. By a vote of six to zero, the Plan Commission approved design reviews for Chipotle and Starbucks, both to conform to what will eventually be approved by the city council as part of the plan development. Also, by votes of six to zero, the Plan Commission recommended city council approvals, as is indicated in all the attached ordinances and the attached resolution. Again, they recommended approval for the amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map to classify the property, the vacant property at eighteen ninety-eight McKee Street to General Commercial. They recommended amending the zoning map to rezone that property to General Commercial and to add a plan development overlay. That would include conditions and modifications to the zoning code as listed in, in the ordinance, and that is twenty-one dash forty-five. They approved the, both, recommended approval of both the conditional use permits for the drive-through restaurants, and they recommended approval for the preliminary and final platter subdivision for Avenue Marketplace. Again, all of these are with conditions as listed in the ordinances. As far as alternatives, as you know, the committee can, or the committee can recommend approval or denial of any or all of the attached ordinances and resolution, resolutions. They can prove it as presented, or after discussion, to include any amendments to any of those before acting. For impacts, these, approval of these would allow for the continued development on this property that fits the Randall Road corridor. While issues regarding buffering to the Sierra Mills properties and flow of traffic between the subject property and the properties to the south are being addressed, these recommendations for approval will allow the project to move forward. And with approvals, the city can realize increased prop, increased property assessment, increased sales tax dollars, as well as adding to the employment base. Staff did not identify any negative impacts with approval. Cow action tonight can allow for final city council action on September seventh. And staff recommends approval of the ordinances and resolution as presented.
Thank you, Joel. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Joel, go ahead. Joel, I, I picked up on something you said. You said the developer was committed to working with Great Escape, but they said that landscaping can be added. Is there a commitment to add landscaping to address the concerns of the residents on the east side?
My understanding is yes. In some communication with the development team earlier today, they submitted a, an idea for plans for increased landscaping along that east property line and for how the, how that access aisle can go into and continue through the Great Escape property and even to another property further to the south, which is under a separate ownership and is not part of the proposal this evening. But just to show how they could extend a driveway through that property to connect with the building where Apple Villa is and Ace Hardware is. They submitted that drawing. Staff has not had time to review it in depth, but I believe they said that they were going to present it this evening, so the committee can take a look at some of the forward thinking that, that they have, and you can find out to what extent they've worked with the adjacent property owners, including the residential properties also.
Fantastic, thank you.
Alderman Knop, I also want to point out, if we can solve this issue of, of getting that north-south road going all the way through, it eliminates some of the left-hand turn motions that might be made out of either the north side or the south side at an area that's so close to the intersection and would really be a safety improvement.
That's one of the things that I've always looked forward to, this property being developed and then being able to make right-hand turns, which way you want to go out of there, but being able to do it with a right-hand turn instead of sitting in line waiting to turn left.
Right.
Alderman Lehman and I went out and met with a bunch of the residents yesterday and walked through some of this to look at some of the actual conditions that are out there now. And a couple of things that we noted when we were out there, along the western edge of the houses that are there in the development that backs up to this, to the east side where the retention pond will be, there's actually a storm water, looks like storm water drain. We're not really sure where that goes or what that's connected to. There's at least three manholes that we found out there. And when they go to do this, I'd like to really find out from engineering or find out from our community development department, has all that been taken into account with where the storm water retention is now?
Yes.
And there's quite a berm already built on the property that's going to become the detention pond, about ten, fifteen feet. It looks like inside of the property line that's marked out there right now, there's, I think, about a four-foot-high berm, maybe a little bit higher in some spots. And is the, the new retention pond going to have any kind of elevation? I've had a hard time trying to look at these drawings to figure out if there's any elevation changes on the east side of the detention pond. Is it going to be at what level compared to the neighborhood immediately to the east of it? And will that detention pond, the edges of that, be burned up at all for the trees to be mounted on, or the bushes or whatever ends up out there for screening to be mounted on? That's two of the questions that I have. And then also, you know, we've got another development right in the middle of this with a giant detention pond that's from Menards over there. Was, at any time, did they try to see if they could combine those to do detention in one spot? And what was the reason why or why not that that didn't work?
Because the water flows to the south, and you would have to engineer. Because the water flows to the south and you would have to engineer to move the water back up north.
Okay, so the deepest end of that pond will be at the southern end of it then. And that's something that I think the developer can answer for us, just a question that I had from tonight. And then definitely the screening that's listed in the original plan that we have and what's online, I think definitely needs to be increased and they can talk to that tonight. And then as far as the traffic goes to the south, I think long years ago when this was first proposed to be redeveloped or something, there is a natural spot for that driveway to be, which I think is where it's at, right in the middle of the development to the south. That lines up with a normal traffic lane that's in the development to the south. So I think that that's where that belongs. And again, the developer can speak to that. Did I miss much? Or do you have anything else written down that I didn't?
I was just going to reiterate that the residents are, and I know they mentioned this at the Plan Committee also, but that the current landscaping there is quite dense, very thick. I was trying to estimate after we went about how many feet thick, but I would say probably 20 feet.
20 feet. And a lot of that is just all undergrowth that's, there's no way to save any of that. I mean, and a lot of the trees that we went through and looked at yesterday, there's fencing that goes through trees. I mean, there's a lot of things that I don't know what would be salvageable if you wanted to try to save those. And I don't know how you would identify anything in there that you would save according to this plan. Because it was very hard to tell where the property line was when you're walking 50 or 75 or 200 feet away from the stake that was out on the other side.
So I guess the question that the residents and we are representing them is, other than some trees going up, what else is going in? And I know, I think this is coming back to the September 15th Plan Commission, the landscaping, but what else will be installed in this property that will give them the privacy they want, the sound barrier, the light barrier, protection from the pollution?
And the developer is here, I believe, back there. They wanted to come up and address any of this. Abby, go ahead.
I have a question, and forgive me because Google Earth is, has not been updated and Avenue Chevy is still in the picture here, so I can't tell. The sidewalks that are listed in the developer's drawing, does that connect to anything that gets you out to McKee in front of whatever the restaurant is there?
I can, I can respond to that. One of the, one of the things that we've been working with the developer is to get a sidewalk that would go north either, either on the, on the Raising Canes property, but more likely we're going to see if we can get something, an easement to have the developer put the sidewalk along the Menards detention area. So that would then make the, make a connection to McKee.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else online have any questions?
Mr. Dempsey, you're up.
Is Abby's hand still raised?
Yeah, Abby, you need to put your hand down.
Sorry.
It's the fun of running Zoom meetings.
Yeah, I hear you. All right. Good evening, everybody. Austin Dempsey from BEI CRE. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with everybody in person and online, representing our great community. Thank you. I am a representative of the development team. I have the majority of the development team with me in the back and we can bring them up at any point in time to answer any questions or provide any additional information that might be needed as for this project and this presentation. I'm joined by Andrew Kolb from Vannick Larson &amp; Kolb. He's our attorney, representing our project. John Green from ERA Resources, he is our civil engineer on the project. I'm also joined by Russ Higgins and Mike Douglas from Randall Road Resources, which ultimately is the contract purchaser and developer for Avenue Marketplace, which as Joel had previously mentioned, is a continuation of the project that this fine group already approved and started with taking the Avenue Chevrolet property, developing Raising Canes, allowing Menards to expand. So we're delighted here to be, have an opportunity to represent really two incredible Batavia families. A lot of you probably are well aware of the history of these properties. The Clark family is a fourth-generation Batavia business family in the city of Batavia. They're the former owners of the Avenue Chevrolet. Plus then, we're joined here tonight by the Pedersen family, who also is a multi-generational family here in Batavia. So we at Randall Road Resources are delighted to be talking about really kind of continuing some great business on sites that have been used and efforts by great Batavia families over the years. And we're really delighted to be joining, you know, having two national credit operators, both Starbucks and Chipotle, be the first of our project here to join Batavia. So we think that they're a great fit for Randall Road and frankly, I will enjoy getting my, getting sales tax dollars and that type of traffic here in the community. And when I'm not getting my great coffee at Limestone, because I just need to shoot up Randall Road, I'll be getting coffee at Starbucks. So, there we go. I'm going to share the screen to hopefully answer some of Alderman Wolf's questions and any other questions that were mentioned. And Alderman Wolf, I was doing what I could earlier to write down your questions, so if I miss any, please by all means let me know. And I'm going to call John Green up here momentarily. John, if you could make your way up here to give us a hand with some of the specifics. But on the screen is a color overlay that our civil engineer and team had put together. Just for orientation, you see Randall Road on the left-hand side of the screen or west on the site, McKee on the north. Raising Canes is there, but as Abby mentioned earlier, some of the Google Maps and Earth images aren't perfectly updated, so it's a little bit of a hybrid and a combination here of our site with the existing site and probably a slightly dated Google Earth image. So the property that we are purchasing is the site that's in color, both yellow and green, as well as the blue site, which is owned by the Pedersen family. The blue site is approximately 1.96 acres. The site that we are doing our development on is approximately five acres. And one of the things that Alderman Wolf, you had mentioned about, you know, some sort of water detention and storm sewer, one of the things I'd like to really highlight on this project, which I think is important, is the fact that this eight-acre car dealer site, all previously drained into the water detention pond along Randall Road or west of our project. We are donating our land, our water detention usage in that site for the remaining development parcel to the city of Batavia, so we're not going to have any of our water detention stored in there. And instead, we're utilizing the Pedersen property, the 1.96 acres, and basically turning the entire property into a water detention area. So that gives us an opportunity to really provide a significant additional buffer from what the current zoning on that 1.96 acres allow. Today, the Pedersen family can go and pull a building permit to create an office building that would allow him to cut all the trees down on the site today, perfectly allowed to do that. And he's able to build a building 25 feet off of the property line. Allowed to have roadways, lights, all that other fun stuff, 25 feet off the property line. That is the zoning that is allowed today. What we're proposing on this is by utilizing that as a buffer, a transitional buffer between the residential subdivision and our commercial, it gives us an opportunity to extend that 25 feet to over 110 feet or four times the buffer between building with lights and the residential area, which is great. From an additional landscape standpoint, I'm going to let John talk about what we have done from a landscaping standpoint, but what you're seeing in front of you, and if I'm smart enough to figure out how to zoom this. There we go. I'm going to kind of highlight that landscaped edge here in a way that hopefully allows us to put it all on the screen. There we go. This landscape plan that you see today is substantially enhanced over the landscape plan that we originally proposed. The landscape plan that we originally proposed completely meets the current city of Batavia building code for landscaped trees and for setbacks and everything else. This is our proposal after meeting with the citizens at the public hearing and reviewing this. And we have taken into account a number of the things, Alderman Wolf, that you had mentioned. So John Green from ERA can kind of talk through the enhancements that we've made along this landscape edge.
Thanks, Austin. This color rendering does show our staggered coniferous buffer enhancement that we've modified on this plan since our last public hearing with the Plan Commission. There was a desire to kind of give more of a living fence, so to speak, between the residential homes behind us. The previous plan that did meet the city code had about 22 or 24 plantings all along. That property line there with the homes is about 650 feet long or so. So we, it was discussed at the Plan Commission, could we perhaps add 50% more plantings along that east end of the, of the water area you see? And we want to step beyond that. We more than doubled the amount of plantings that are shown. So we are showing all coniferous evergreen-type species. It'll be a green living fence that'll be green and provide screening with year-round screening. We have a berm along that easterly property line. Alderman Wolf, you mentioned there's an existing one. The berm is, will be needed as part of our stormwater detention facility. So it's going to be a substantial berm. The berm undulates because the ground goes up and down, but on average, the berm is at least 30 to 36 inches tall, so almost three feet tall. And it varies as the grades change. The width of that berm is going to be about five feet tall. And what that five-foot substantial width lets us do is actually to stagger all our trees. If you can see in on the zoomed-in renderings, we're showing eight-foot balden burlap coniferous trees, a combination of white pines and spruces that are disease-tolerant, that are staggered. They meet the specifications of the Landscape and Arborist Institute in terms of, you don't plant trees for what they'll look like year one, but they're planted to, at the appropriate spacings. I think we have them either 14 or 15 feet apart. So the staggered row will allow them to fill in quickly and we believe satisfy a lot of the questions and concerns that were brought up by the neighbors at the Plant Commission meeting. So I want to talk just a bit before I turn it back to Austin, is that the blue area shown is our stormwater detention pond. That's, that complies with the current Kane County ordinance for native species. The bottom of the pond, although it's shown blue, will actually be native plantings. It will be plant species that are all native to the state of Illinois. They'll provide not only stormwater volume, but stormwater quality and stormwater filtration. The deep root zones on these native plantings will allow natural absorption into the ground. In fact, the deep root zones actually keep the soil separated so that the soil is absorbed into the ground a little bit easier, which takes the loading off of our storm sewer systems and our roadway ditches. So it's important to note that this detention pond actually takes the Avenue Chevy impervious area that we've known there for decades and removes that from being stored in the front pond along Randall Road. And instead, this whole new development actually will be stored on the east end of the property. The storage volume is oversized and upsized so that the water can slowly release back towards the Randall Road pond. We are aware that the Randall Road pond does fill up in large storm events. We've accounted for that in our design and so we provided additional incremental storage in our system to alleviate any concerns. So I'll turn it back to Austin. Oh, sure. Yeah, Austin asked me to talk about Lot D. That is the triangular lot that's located immediately west of the blue-colored pond in the rendering. That's a, that lot is not sold yet or there's no development in mind for it. It's a spec vacant lot along with Lot A. But we did in our amended landscape plan add enhanced plantings along what would be the westerly shoreline of our Outlet E detention facility. You'll see some of the different color-shaded green in this rendering. That's a, those are coniferous evergreen trees filled in with lower-level shrubs and other compatible planting. So if you would, we have, we have a double row of screening. So we first of all have a double-staggered row of coniferous along our east line. And then the width of our pond is about 110 feet wide, which is about the width of the Pedersen property. And then we have that second line of defense, if you would, to provide additional screening. And then you can of course see the distance between that Outlet D and then where our new roadway is. And of course, then the buildings that line up due south of the Canes development. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on any of that explanation?
Abby has her hand up.
Okay. Abby, go ahead.
Thank you, Austin and John. A question for, for both of you on the detention basin. John, will it be ERA that does the ongoing maintenance of the basin or what does that maintenance plan look like?
Yeah, the current Kane County ordinance requires a maintenance and monitoring plan of all basins these days. So the Kane County code was just totally revised just a couple of years ago. And there will be a Commercial Property Owners Association that is comprised of all the owners within this project. And they will commit to, you know, weekly, monthly, annual maintenance as needed. They'll be obligated to keep the plantings alive, keep the grass mowed, keep the invasive species out. And there's particularly, at the start of the project, for the first three years, a maintenance and monitoring plan that takes over. We have to wait till all the plant plugs get to mature size, which is after three years. So in the meantime, while we're waiting for all the native plants to mature, there's some intentional landscaping in terms of pulling the dandelions and the native species out of there so that the native plants can thrive. So the HOA will be maintaining that. Right now, the city of Batavia, I believe, might own the pond that we know along Randall Road, but this will be completely privately owned by the property owners.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
The, also just to echo that the county actually owns the pond along Randall, that was acquired by them some time ago. And then also as part of the development, we would be requiring a backup special service area to be created that would, you know, pay for maintenance of the roads or the ponds if, if for some reason the owners association does not do so. So that would be a backup special service area as part of the development.
Anybody else have any questions at this point? Okay, well, I think from, from my standpoint, a lot of the questions that I had as far as the berm, the increased screening and everything, is there, my notes here. As far as the traffic on the driveway to the south, I didn't see all of what was in the Plan Commission. I didn't watch that or anything. What exactly is the hangup with the Great Escape out there as far as their?
Sure. I'll zoom this out a little bit so we can get a, so there is a, it's a great question. We had a nice conversation with Great Escape. We actually met out on site and I know all of you are familiar with every street around Batavia. So, but since I kind of fit into that role too, I've lived here a long time, I frankly had to get out there on site and, and take a look at it. When the Great Escape was, was built, this fine institution here caused the Great Escape to create a roadway, which is an access point that it joins, I'll use the pointer here to try to bring the mouse down, right at our southerly line here. And the city has an existing public access and utility easement that goes into that property to the south. That property is currently built, so there is a road and then it accesses back around here and then comes through here. So as the developer developing our site here, we are tying into the already existing So as the developer developing our site here, we are tying into the already existing municipal public access that's down there. That site is, it needs some, it needs some attention. Some trees have grown over quite a bit, and so we got down there with Great Escape and our team and the shopping center owners, to the southeast hardware shopping center owner, and took a look at it and determined that there is some improvements that need to be made, and we're working on, you know, how we can clean that up. Inclusive of that is, take a look here. Bringing up a new off-site improvement plan here. I will do my best to fully orientate you. So over here is the Great Escape. You can see it on the plan. This is roughly their parking lot, and again, John and his team at ERA created this, and this existing roadway right here. So I'm going to zoom in on this part just so we get a pretty good sense of where that easement comes in. Right at this part where the cursor is, is where the easement comes in that we're planning on accessing the property to the north. So that'll be our connection point between the property to the north that we're developing and the property to the south that's already developed. When the Great Escape was built, they built this road and the city staff was, you know, foreshadowed potential connection there. I think it's been in the comprehensive plan for quite some time, decades at this point. And so they had Great Escape construct this part of the road which is, which is currently there. And I will zoom out then and give us an opportunity to look at what the conversation has been. So our plan originally was to tie in to the road that's currently there and it's existing that already has a municipal access and easement agreement. We've done our part. We've connected to, to the property that already has all the agreements in play. Great Escape approached us and said, you know, there's going to be a lot of people coming through here, and this is where they access their trucks. This roadway comes down here and currently deadens on this site here, and possible if I look at, nope, that's not going to help. We'll go back here. And so this deadens here. So what is being discussed is we're, we're moving forward with our project with the current access that's in play here because we're legally entitled to do it, and it's there, and the city decades ago came up with this idea to connect there. This piece right here currently sits on an undeveloped lot, and as Scott Buning pointed out at the public hearing, actually, there is a public utility and access agreement that goes right straight through here. So what you're seeing here is a concept that we're currently in discussions with, with the folks at Great Escape, as well as the shopping center owners to the south, about extending that through, and it's going to take you right down here to near Apple Villa. So rather than the traffic coming down here and turning in and going around through the Great Escape parking lot, which is currently what has, has been proposed, is this road would be continued through here, through what is now a grass area and would connect to the Apple Villa parking lot. So Apple Villa will lose a spot or two, but it will give a greater access point for folks to navigate both north and south in between the two properties.
And who owns the property that's the grass?
So the, the prop, in the, advanced foreshadowing by some amazing city staff a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away, or Batavia here, they actually encumbered this with a access road easement that's already in place. So it's currently there. The property adjacent to it is owned by Phil Shals, who is the owner of the Ace Hardware Shopping Center. So this was originally contemplated as a roadway that was going to connect through. We don't, we feel like we don't have to do that because we are legally connecting to the part of the roadway that's already there. However, after conversations with our friends at the Great Escape and the property owner to the south, it makes sense for us to probably try to put this together and allow that traffic to have a much cleaner flow in between the two properties. So that is, at this point, our plan.
You know, now seeing this in this offsite on here, when I was out there and looked at this again, there's, I believe it's the last house that would have been in the Saratoga subdivision, has quite a berm built up with a fence around it. Is that all on their own property, or is any part of that spill over into what you're buying from?
We, we won't be touching that. I'm going to zoom in here.
Okay. I just saw that it's on there with that fence.
Oh, no, what did I do? There we are. So the, my survey crews are out in the last week, and all these lines represent the contour lines of that existing berm.
Okay.
For reference, the top of the berm has a wood fence on it, and the, this is the fence symbol that's out there today. So this fence right here where my cursor's pointing represents about a six- or seven-foot tall berm. The existing Great Escape pavement area right here is down at the toe, or the base, or the bottom of the west side. So we're going to continue that. This is all mowed grass right here. It's flat. We don't anticipate that we'll be cutting into or carving into that berm. So all of that screening and sightline and noise reduction that's happened is going to stay. Perhaps the only thing that's going to happen is the, you know, from Google Earth, Austin pointed out, we can't even see this asphalt on Google Earth because a lot of the trees are leaning over. They'll have to be pruned back just to allow automobile traffic, but the vegetated berm will remain in its current state.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? I know we have a bunch of residents that are here, and maybe some that are online. Do any of the residents want to speak tonight? Come on up, use the mic.
I've got a prepared statement, and it's been revised after listening to their discussion. So I'll go into those comments at the end of this presentation.
And can we just get your name for the record?
Yes, sir.
That's all we need.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kevin Blonnik. I live on Hadley Drive in the Sierra Mills subdivision. I'm also a member of the Sierra Mills Homeowners Association Board. Our subdivision consists of 62 houses whose owners take great pride in our properties and in our subdivision. The city has never dealt with an issue in our subdivision, and the homeowners association is proactive in maintaining an attractive appearance to our common space and any areas exposed to public view. This includes lawn maintenance along McKee and Western avenues, the pond at the intersection of the two streets, tree maintenance and replacement, and even the hedge around the city's guardrail on both Western and McKee. Our subdivision has maintained these common areas in order to preserve the attractiveness, the security, and the privacy of the subdivision's properties. Our governing homeowners association guidelines strictly limit modifications which would not comply with the harmony of the extent of the external design and/or location in relation to surrounding structures or topography. Although this project is not a part of the homeowners association common areas, however, after 25 years, the wooded property along the western side of the subdivision has been considered a part of this formula of the attractiveness, security, and privacy of our neighborhood. This woodland has trees with an average height of over 25 feet currently throughout the woodland, and with many trees extending at heights to over 30 feet. Although a majority of the association members support the development of the Avenue Marketplace property, not one homeowner, not one homeowner is in favor of eliminating a 75-foot-wide forest that currently provides a light and sound barrier from the current traffic on Randall Road. Furthermore, the increase of traffic, headlights, and exhaust from customers in the businesses, drive-throughs would increase, and along this new service road, this increase would serve to increase the pollution of light, sound, exhaust, and fast-food container pollution into our neighborhood. Not only do developers of Avenue Marketplace want to eliminate this parcel of the land, but as they've stated, they want to put this retention pond in. Approving this part of the development plan would be short-sighted by the committee on the local impact of this project, and we feel it would certainly not demonstrate a representation of a portion of your constituents. As taxpayers, we expect that our city would work with us, with the contractors for a solution that allows for the economic progress to move forward while balancing the protection of a quiet and vibrant subdivision that contributes to the appeal of our community. We would also expect our representatives to go out of their way to ensure preservation of our property values. We do feel that there are feasible alternatives, and some of that was addressed tonight. We did, as we met with, with our Alderman Wolf and Lehman last night, we discussed options for containment into the current retention pond. We discussed stormwater mitigation techniques, as have been done at Batavia High School, and we also think that further research into the Kane County land on Randall Road for the retention pond there should be investigated further. In listening to the presentation tonight, I'd like to address a couple of things with the landscape plan that they have proposed for that, that has been revised. First of all, the original proposals had 22 trees, and you said, I believe you said it would double now to 44? 48? Okay. Thank you. The Batavia, current Batavia statutes for plants require that evergreens, the regulation, 403 in the landscape regulations state that the evergreens must be six feet, and also ornamental trees are required to be six feet. This is substantially less than the 25 to 30-feet trees that currently occupy the land. And even with the increase of two layers of woodlands, we're looking at currently about 60 feet less of protection. Because currently, right now, we are looking at 75 feet, which was, was measured by us. Do you like the, we do like the idea, I do personally like the idea of an increased berm. That would, that would help, but once again, the height of the trees would be significantly less with taking down the current woodland and replacing it with fresh trees. I do, I do believe that if you do go with an increased berm height, we would need more than 36 inches to protect our, and preserve our neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Come on up.
My name is Sean Tingley. I live in Hadley Drive in Batavia, and I guess one of the questions I have is, are any of the existing trees, have they been evaluated for how well they'll continue to grow if we kept them? Is there any possibility of keeping some of the trees in conjunction with the updated landscaping that they're adding with the 48 trees? Is there any way to do that?
I guess I'd refer to the developer because they're going to be the one that has to move all the dirt out there to create the new berm that fits where the retention pond would be, whether or not any of those trees would be salvageable.
Has anything been done to survey that or question that? Like the diameter of the trees been measured?
Yes.
Right. Yeah, if you want to come back up and respond to that.
Yes, sure. We, we did do a tree survey. We've located the trees. We had an arborist out there. Majority of the sites, although it's green, and I agree, it's kind of a green screen. It's, a lot of it's invasive species, nothing that's desirable. There are some larger trees that are taller, and unfortunately, there, the stormwater management requirements are so strenuous these days by the county and the city. You know, flooding is an emotional thing, and we're required to manipulate all the earth and grades, and the detention pond will be dug out about five or six feet deep. I do want to highlight that we will be replanting the detention area with all native species. So we'll be replacing the berm. It was cited that the city ordinance requires six-foot-tall evergreen trees. Our plans suggest eight-foot-tall trees. So we're exceeding the ordinance in terms of coniferous evergreen height. In addition to that, we're planting on the top of a 30 to 36-inch undulating berm. That's substantial five-foot width that allows for the staggering of the trees. And from a quantity standpoint, the previous submitted plan did exceed the city requirements from a buffering. So, you know, we're perhaps two and a half to three times what the code requirement is. And we did that out of the feedback that we received from the community and the residents at the public hearing. So, so just to close, we did locate the trees. There aren't any that allow us to substantially regrade and meet the detention and water requirements. Once you disturb the critical root zone of any of the large trees, it, this tree can't be saved. And so we've looked at it a few ways, and we feel that this proposal meets not only the requirements from the stormwater and the drainage, but also the aspects of the code with respect to the ordinance and the screening.
Okay. Thank you.
There are some attendees who have asked questions online. Would you like me to read those?
Sure. Go ahead.
From George Keck, it was mentioned that the pond was oversized, so can the berm be increased along the Sierra Mills subdivision in height by two feet, which would shift the west detention line by six to eight feet, and the detention would be right-sized? And then secondly, can you please clarify what the elevation and space will look like between the Menards detention and the proposed detention? What is the Menards bottom-of-detention elevation and the proposed elevation of the adjacent pond?
Sure. I'll answer the last question first. The berm heist will be relatively similar. There is, there's a unique water drainage pattern, in that even though the Menards pond is located directly adjacent to our pond, the water backfeeds from Menards property behind Steak and Shake. So it's, the energy of the water from Menards moves beneath McKee Street. There was a large pipe put in. So the elevations and heists will be similar. The Menards pond drains north. Our proposed pond will drain west between our two new buildings and connect to the Randall Road pond. The initial question, just to clarify on my word oversized, the, the city has a certain standard for pond detention sizing based on square footage of impervious area. Although the code also requires us to analyze the downstream conditions, and if there is tailwater or flooding in the outlet pipe condition, which there is in the pond that we know on this photo, we're required to upsize or oversize the pond because it's, the pipe is not a free-draining situation. So there is no extra volume in the pond that we could decrease it. City staff, Rahat and his team, has already looked at this and, and approved and agrees with our, our stormwater detention rate.
That's right. The city conducted its own independent stormwater study of this area and concurs with the engineering that the detention pond that is being proposed is of the needed and appropriate size. And there was mention whether, whether or not the city had studied whether detention along Randall Road could be used for, completely for the storage of this, this development, and it cannot. There is not enough room in that basin, and the overflow pipe from that basin is, at this point, too high.
And I know we had discussed that when Canes originally was developed out there, that, you know, would that be enough to do the entire development in total, you know, in the future? And we knew that that was not possible.
Right. Which is why we did the study, and the developer was willing to accept the results of those, that study and incorporate it into the design of this detention. There is another question online from Grace Maskell. Is there a risk to flooding in the neighborhood?
No, the, the risk of flooding has greatly dropped or decreased because although this property contained a large abandoned automobile parking lot, which had substantial rooftop and asphalt, we are, we are not really increasing the impervious area that much. I, I think this project as a whole is, adds just about less than a half acre of additional impervious area in round numbers. But the way the codes and ordinances are written, we must detain as if we are providing volume for the entire project. volume for the entire project. So the neighbors are used to, the municipality is used to a certain amount of runoff, because the property formerly was a automobile dealership without a hard surface. So we are contemplating our new project with lots of green space and landscaping and buffers, and in addition to that, adding a detention pond that's almost two acres in size.
We have to come up and use the microphone, sir.
Because it's recording. Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that question. I think what the Neighborhood Association is worried about is the placement of where it is, how that would impact flooding in the neighborhood versus before the detention pond was there, the runoff, like you said, there was more blacktop surface area there. And it was our assumption that the runoff went into the Randall Road detention pond. Now with having the detention pond closer to houses, will that impact flooding placement?
The short answer is no. The long answer is that all of our development will drain to the pond, but there's a large berm that's going to be constructed behind the homes on the, on the east side. The berm's going to hold the water back, and the pond, the blue area that's shown, is going to drain back to the west side, back towards Randall Road. So our project is self-sustaining and self-sufficient. Where any water we generate is going to be held on our property, and then the water's going to drain west, which is its natural existing condition directional flow, towards Randall Road, and then ultimately to the south, and then it drains into the tributary behind Tower Carwash and Holy Cross, which is its natural existing condition. We did, just one other note, there's a rigorous engineering submittal process that goes along with any development here in town, and we've completed topographical surveys and drainage studies, and everything has been reviewed and cross-reviewed by the city engineering staff. So we not only meet the Kane County ordinance, but also the city engineering ordinances for things like this. So it'll be a welcome, good addition, and, you know, it meets all the ordinances.
Thank you.
And Ms. Maskell had her hand up, so is, did you want to make any further comments?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. So I used to work for the city of Naperville, part of the PR team there. And I was involved in, when there was heavy rains and all of the retention ponds that ended up flooding all of Naperville for the most part. So that's my concern. Like, how, how are we sure that, you know, you know, heavy rains will not, you know, flood the neighborhood? I've seen it myself, working for the city of Naperville, and just have some major concerns.
Because we did the analysis and the topographical studies, we obtained all of the previous records of the pond and the neighborhood from the city and the county staff. We've analyzed it. We checked it once, we checked it twice, and we also submitted it to the city. They've checked it once and twice, and also had an outside consultant review the work. So there have been three or four different layers of engineering analysis and review.
Sean, on that note, is this detention pond just planned to handle average rainfall, 50-year rainfall, the 100-year flood?
It's designed for the 100-year rainfall event. So that's the, that's the rainfall event that has a 1% chance of happening every year. But it's what, you know, the last large storm we had was what, 2015, I think it was? That, that wasn't even the 100-year event. Actually, that was a series of back-to-back 40 or 50 years events over a three-day period, if I'm not mistaken. But, so we got pretty close to it. But this detention facility would hold more than that. And, and the other additional relief it'll bring to the neighborhood is we are required per ordinance to size a pond as if the site is vacant. But from my previous note, we know the site hadn't been vacant. It had a large asphalt parking lot, which actually contributed some runoff. So there's actually probably some credit back to the city in the front pond along Randall Road, because all of our water is being enhanced and stored in our new facility.
I don't know if Joel or Scott could answer this. There is, or there are several drains in the backyards of the houses, the western edge of the development that's there to the east. Do we know which way that drains? I mean, there's a, there's a significant drop-off in the back of the yards that's there, and it goes down to stormwater drains manholes in the backyards. You know, which, which way that drains? Does that drain to the south? Because it looks like there's an open culvert at the extreme north end along McKee Street in one of the backyards, or actually might even be in common area along McKee Street.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly where that may go, but my guess, based on the way that development is laid out, is it probably goes north and east towards the pond that is at Western and McKee, because that's part of that whole development. So my guess is that those, that, that is tributary to that pond. But we could find that out.
Yeah, because that's something that I think for the neighborhood to know, that that's where their normal water would drain off of their houses, their lots. All goes to the backyards that are on the western edge of their lots that borders up against this new pond. That's where all their drains are.
Yeah. Yeah, Alan, that's an isolated system. So the Sierra Mills lot lines have it, every other lot has a catch basin or so.
Okay.
And those are all interconnected with underground pipes.
That would probably go to the, the one at the corner of
Yes.
McKee and Western.
Yeah.
That's where that drains to.
I don't have a legible copy of my full engineering plan with us, but we, I know from our design that we're not impacting any storms or others. We're matching the grade at our property line.
We have additional online questions from George Keck. What best management practices were used on lots A, B, C, and D to reduce the volume of the detention system? And could the geometry of the access road that separates lots A, B, C, and D and the detention facility be slightly shifted 10 to 15 feet to the west along? With reducing the setback between Lot D and the access road detention to allow for the grading to occur approximately 20-foot west and maintain the elevation at the bottom of the berm within the site that separates the proposed pond and Sierra Mills? Are there any existing onsite to offsite drainage patterns being maintained? Where is the 100-year overflow route? And does ordinance require you to oversize the detention pond for a 100-year event or a typical 10-year event, which is the best practice?
Yeah. I think I got them all. Start from the beginning. The volume control best management practices for the entire development, A, B, C, and D, and our roadway, is located in our detention facility. The native plantings that I spoke about are sized and designed for that routine one-inch, two-inch minor weekend rainfall to cover all of the impervious area. So our detention pond is a dual-purpose pond. It's not your manicured pond with Gulf Car Spritzer and fountain in it, but instead, the native bottom plantings sort of satisfy the volume control practices which are sized for the two-year event. The next question was about the geometry of the roadway. We, we're tying into two fixed points. Raising Kane's left for us a, a street stub on the north, and the city entitled Great Escape many years ago with a platted ingress egress easement to the south. And there's certain fire truck and automobile and safe-stopping distances templates that we worked through with the city staff, and there were a couple of renditions of this road. And the current geometry we have is what we needed to get the city hook-and-ladder fire truck through all the projects and through the road, and also meet safe-stopping distance and traffic standards. So we can't do much about relocating the excess point on the Great Escape. Relating to overland flow and sizing, yes, the pond is sized for the 100-year storm event. The project also does include any existing overland flow routes. This entire project, in its current existing condition today, drains to the west towards Randall Road in the 100-year event for both the minor and the major storm. And these project plans submitted also will maintain those routes. We're required by law to follow existing drainage patterns. And I think I got them all.
The, the last one was, does the ordinance require you to oversize the detention pond for 100-year event or a typical 10-year event? Which I think you answered.
Oh, yeah, 100-year.
100-year. Okay. There are no other questions online?
And I will point out, just last January, the state of Illinois increased the rainfall intensities.
Yes.
Because the 100-year storm keeps, seems to be getting bigger and bigger. It's a moving target. So I, don't quote me on this, I think the 100-year storm event was just adopted by the state of Illinois. It went from nine and a half or 10 inches an hour to almost 11 and a half inches in a 24-hour period. If, if you're going to start seeing bigger detention ponds in the city, that's one of the reasons. Is the intensities and the data we're using has been expanded.
Thank you.
I did have one last question, not related to water. The, the way the road is routed, that's going to come south off McKee, around the east side of the property, south of Great Escape, and then come back west to the north side of the existing Apple Villa?
Yes.
And then south again?
Yes. There is a
It'll make a jog.
Yeah, it's going to follow the easement that was platted years ago when the Great Escape went in. While I'm zoomed in here, here's the Apple Villa building. This is their 90-degree parking. This is the 90-degree parking facing north. Where my cursor is, is the existing 24-foot drive aisle. And where the cursor is now, that's an existing utility and ingress egress easement. So this easement that runs east-west then turns right here, right about where Apple Villa's dumpster is today, the easement turns 90 degrees north, and then lines up directly with the Great Escape driveway.
The reason I ask is the U-Haul storage, or the U-Haul rental vehicles that are on the east side of that building back there, if you were to follow that road straight through, it looks like a great way to get to Wilson, just stay along the backside of that building. Is there potential for increased traffic in an area where we've already indicated for the U-Haul to store their vehicles rather than in the front of the building?
Sure. I believe there's plans in talking with the adjoining owner to put some directional signage.
Okay.
It's better for our neighbors to the south to have any commingled traffic across the front of their businesses than in the back.
Any more?
Jim from Anderson, Sierra Mills owners. When all the developers are gone, if some small percentage of trees die, who is it that we go to? Is there a Market Avenue Association that will
Jim, thank you. Yes, the Commercial Owners Association that's being set up for the Avenue Marketplace, backed up by the SSA that the city is requiring, that Scott Buonin mentioned earlier, will govern that those trees have to be maintained and landscaped and replaced. And the SSA that Scott mentioned is the city's backstop that allows the city to come in and enforce through additional real estate taxes, maintenance provisions, if that's not done by the Commercial Owners Association. So yes, it will be taken care of.
Anybody else have any questions? Your honor?
Yeah, Alan, I've sat here and listened to this conversation. When I was first elected mayor in Batavia in 1981, the Saratoga subdivision was out there by itself, and it was not properly built to begin with. I don't, I don't take any blame for it, because it was already there when I got elected. In 1996, we had a 23-inch rain, and the whole place flooded. Every street, every basement, it was a god-awful mess you ever wanted to see out there. As a result of that, the city council at that time took the action, and I believe we spent over $2 million putting in a whole new drainage system around the Saratoga subdivision and getting it straight. When your subdivision came in, they were great people to work with. We asked for the best as far as drainage. We put in the big pond there right at the corner of McKee and Western. Everything was done right, and I think we are in a position now that we really, I think the water thing, we got it all running down Randall Road. We got a big pipe that comes up there by Avenue Motors, takes it down, and goes across Randall Road by Main Street and takes it down there by the Holy Cross Church, and that's where we dump it. It goes through a cleaning process there on that wild grass and that, that's on the east side of the Holy Cross parking lot. And then we dump it into Mill Creek there, and everybody that's in the environmental world seems to tell me that we're doing the right thing, we're cleaning the water. We've not had, since the 96 event, when we had this terrible problem, we spent the $2 million, and we got most of it fixed for Saratoga, because they were the ones that were in serious problems. The one thing I would like to offer here, because I certainly can understand what these folks are saying, we are very fortunate in Batavia to have a city arborist. We have a gentleman that's been in the tree business in Batavia for over 60 years. Name is Frank Sopp. He's retired, but he likes to do stuff. And so there's been several projects such as this one that'll come, and I've said to Mr. Sopp, Frank, I'd like to have you keep an eye on what's being planted there, how it's being planted, what the trees are, how far they are away from everything, are they going to live or are they going to die? And he really gets into this. So I'm going to, tomorrow, I'll see him. I'm scheduled to see him tomorrow. I'm going to ask him if he'll take this one on, and he'll probably jump at the opportunity. He'll probably be out there two or three times a day, checking out to see where the trees are and how they're growing and what kind of tree it is. And he's done the city of Batavia a lot of favors over the years, because he's put out a lot of fires with people worried about tree being, trees being planted the wrong way or in the wrong position, or whatever have you. So I really want to commend, you know, Mr. Douglas and Austin Dempsey and all those who are involved in this thing, because they've talked to me on a couple of occasions and said that, you know, they wanted to do it right and get everything going the right way. I think our staff has met very extensively with them, and we've pointed out what we thought were the wild cards, and certainly, you know, their acquisition of the Patterson property, I think is going to be a real nice addition out there. To get that into a producivo, producing situation for the neighborhood where we'll store the stormwater and it won't be running off into anybody's subdivision, I think it'll be, the way it's being planned, it'll be a nice use. But I'll have Mr. Sopp keep his eye on that, too, and make sure that it's, whatever's planted there is, looks, looks good and works good and is friendly with Mother Nature. And, you know, the nice part about it is he doesn't charge us anything. He just loves to go out and do this, and he knows what he's talking about. I mean, this guy is a, you know, educated arborist and fully, you know, knowledgeable, and he just loves Batavia and likes to do stuff like this. So he'll be jumping with joy tomorrow when I say, hey, I'd like to have you go out there and Saratoga and state, start taking a look at what's going on, watch it, see as how it's being built, and if we don't see things going the right, you tell. He's very good friends with our street superintendent and our director of public properties, and all he would do is call Scott Haynes or Billy Kellman and say, oh, these three trees need to be moved three feet over, and those boys will be out there, and they'll be moving the three trees. I mean, it's just that way to go. So I will offer that up. I appreciate your concerns, and I'll have a watchman out there to make sure that we're planning everything the way it should be planned.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Do we have anyone else online? Another one in the audience here. Come on up.
Hi. Mike Shiesel. I'm a homeowner in the Sierra Mills homeowners association. Just want a little more clarity on the plantings that are going to be there. It sounded like you're increasing the number of trees, but I didn't hear if there can be kind of mixed-height vegetation, that they all can be trees that are, grow higher, there'll be some trubs or bushes that planting at a, that'd be at a lower level to, to kind of, local levels of
I'll let them answer.
Mike, thank you for the question. Kevin and Sean appreciate the questions as well, as well as all the good feedback that we've been having and dialogue today. As, as the mayor had mentioned, at the onset, I talked about us representing two longstanding multi-generational Batavia families, and we're, we take that very seriously. We're very proud of the fact that we're going to deliver on this site something that's going to last the test of time and be a very positive development for the city of Batavia and for our and for our community in a multitude of different facets. I'd like to specifically answer your question, Mike. The trees are, the code of the, the Batavia code currently calls for six-foot trees. Our plan is to add eight-foot trees. So, I'd just like to highlight a few things as we kind of had talked earlier. You know, current zoning allows that property to have a building built 25 feet from the edge of the property today. That, we're increasing that more than four times with over 110 feet worth of buffer with the additional water detention area. In addition to that, code, I believe, requires 20 trees. We originally proposed 22, and after the feedback from the public hearing, we are currently at 48 trees along that far easterly line. So, more than 100% increase in trees. We then staggered the trees, per John's suggestion, and, I should say, per ERA's arborist's suggestion as far as to give the trees the maximum ability to grow and be successful. In addition to that, there is a 36-plus or minus, as the land undulates, what am I, berm, thank you, berm that runs along there, that the six-foot trees, no, eight-foot trees are being planted on in addition to that 36 inches. In addition to that, we've also agreed, and we are going to over-landscape Lot D's easterly border, which is along here, to provide a double level of vegetation and landscaping across the, not 25 feet, but 110 feet of buffer plus of all the additional landscaping that we mentioned on that side. In addition to that, we also are fully complying with code along our drive with landscaping along there. We talked about detention ponds enough. I won't mention all the benefits of the additional water detention. But we feel very proud of the fact that this subdivision, that this development will be very respectful of the citizens in the Sierra Millers subdivision, and we're hopefully delighted to work with you guys and bring something to Batavia that is going to be very successful and help make the community proud. Thank you.
Okay. I guess the one question I have is, Scott, I know this is going to come back to the Plan Commission on the landscaping. Do we want to add updated landscaping plan to, I would imagine it's probably the final plat, and include that?
Yeah, you can have this added as part of the plan development approval for the whole project. And, you know, the recommendation that you make will go back to the Plan Commission, you know, with, if, assuming that you're going to go with this drawing, you know, you recommend that, we'll take that back to Plan Commission and they'll make their recommendation. But, you know, this will be the new baseline of the landscaping, essentially.
The landscaping plan, you would want, under ordinance 2145, amending the zoning map for the plan development overlay?
Right, for the plan development overlay. That's correct, Joel, correct?
I just want to make sure I...
Yes. Yes, that can be added. And the developer, the applicants are good listeners. I think they've heard, they heard the conversation in the Plan Commission meeting. They, as you can see, they increased landscaping. They now have an opportunity, when this goes back to the Plan Commission on September 15th, that they can present perhaps even a further revised landscape plan that maybe can address some of the comments this evening a little better.
Okay. And then, as far as the off-site work on the road for the traffic on the driveway to the south, do we want to include that as an amendment in one of these?
We can. I guess one of the things that we would probably have a question about is the cost and the participation for that. It's an off-premise, off-site improvement. They have the right to build that because it's an access easement. But I don't know if we wanted to or if the developer wants to talk about, you know, any type of cost sharing or anything like that as part of that.
If I'd get permission to address the committee again, as we had stated earlier, we are connecting into the already-existing public access and utility, access and easement agreement, or easement site that's out there. And we are working with the property owners, adjoining property owners, to attempt to come up with a solution that can, that can allow for that roadway to be expanded. That, however, is a series of discussions that are taking place that is not considered part of this original project because we are tapping into an existing roadway access point that's already there. So, we're interested in working with those developers to, and those property owners, to make that property, you know, as a smooth in succession for north-to-south vehicular traffic, but would prefer not to have it as a condition in the approval of this development as proposed.
Anybody have any comments on either one of those? Okay. I think with those, the updated landscaping setup, and again, that has to go back to the Plan Commission for that to be approved, even if it is part of the plan development, that'll still have to have approval from the Plan Commission and then come back to City Council to final approval on that landscape plan. But I think that it should be noted in here and this that that would be a condition of the approval of this ordinance.
Sorry to interrupt here. Joel and Scott at the public hearing may want to talk. Joel's got his hand raised, so, perfect. Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I, well, I'll ask the chair if I can speak.
Go ahead, Joel.
Thank you. The intention was to have the city council or have the committee make a recommendation on ordinances this evening that can be approved at their meeting, at the council meeting on September 7th. The Plan Commission does, did include in their design review approvals for the, for the properties, reviewing of the landscape plan that addresses the east line of the detention property. The look at the landscape plan or the actual landscape plan approval is more the province of the Plan Commission to approve with development. We typically do that with design review. I think it's a fair, a fair question that the applicant has brought up to not require city council approval of the approved landscape plan. The Plan Commission is more than capable of, in an open meeting, allowing the neighbors to speak, to talk about the landscape plan. And if it takes another iteration of a plan, so be it. But the Plan Commission will be there to make the final approval unless, of course, the city council wants to have the Plan Commission come back to you for approval of whatever the Plan Commission approves. I guess you do have that opportunity.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we, the city, are happy with it, that it achieves as much as we can for the residents that live along that border so that way we're not back here with a dozen or more people that are upset that we approved something that they don't like. And I know the developer doesn't want that.
Laura, go ahead. Are you seeing something in the plan that was presented this evening that is not acceptable to you?
No, I'm just trying to decide, do we want to have one more shot at this, or do we want to let the Plan Commission go through their public hearing and then let them do the design review okay and then be done with it?
If, if you are okay with the plan that they have presented today, would that be worthy of the delay that waiting until putting it back to Plan Commission would entail? Is, I guess, what I'm asking. If you've already seen something that you deem acceptable today and you, and that is communicated to the Plan Commission, it is unlikely, based upon the Plan Commission's recommendation at their meeting, that the developers increase the amount of vegetation in their plan, that they're going to take away from what you saw proposed today. If anything, they would propose more. So, I would recommend that the delay that it would cause is not worth that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I like the fact that there is a varied layout, and I like the fact that we now know that there is a berm there where it was very hard to tell in the original plans whether, what the elevations were to any of that.
Alderman, Serone has his hand up.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to support that. Anything we can do, knowing that there's still process and oversight, anything we can do to hasten the process and not add to delays, I would be in supportive.
I don't know that landscaping changes would hold the process up of moving this forward to City Council on these. I just want to know, do we want to have it in here, just stating that the updated landscape plan with Plan Commission approval moves forward? And then we'll let the developer work out the deal along the southern access route. And if we have to facilitate that at a further time, we'll figure that out. Everybody okay with that?
Alan, I would be in support of that as long as we had guarantees that, you know, the developer is going to continue, at least with this plan, if not better, like as Laura was saying.
He's right there. He can tell us.
Plan that we presented tonight, we're very proud of for all the reasons that we had mentioned, and our plan is to submit that to the public hearing, to the Plan Commission, I should say, on the 15th of September, which we already have on schedule to do this. We will not be submitting anything less than what the plan was, that was presented tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, with that, unless there are any other questions, I'm going to start making motions. And thank you for everybody that came down tonight to discuss this and go through this. This is how we want these things to work, and we want the feedback. We want a developer that's willing to work with the city and work with the residents to make changes in it, to try to make things better. That's exactly where we want to be. Okay. I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 21-44, amending the comprehensive plan land use map in general commercial for 1898 McKee Street. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Knop. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanza? And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Okay. Thank you. Is Baron here?
Yes.
No? Okay. Did we get a time when she showed up? I didn't see her on the screen.
8:05.
Please put a message up there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next would be item B, which is ordinance 21-45, amending the zoning map to general commercial 1898 McKee Street and amending, adding a planned development overlay 1898 and 1994 McKee Street. And that would also include an updated landscape as presented this evening with future approval by the Plan Commission. That's my motion. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanza?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. Up next is item C, ordinance 21-46, conditional use permit for a drive-through for Restaurant Starbucks at 1994 McKee Street. Motion. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanza?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right. Next is item D, which I'll make the motion to recommend to council ordinance 21-47, conditional use permit for drive-through restaurant overlay at 1994 McKee Street. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanza?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. Last up is item E. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 21-84-R, final plat of subdivision for Avenue Marketplace, 1898 and 1994 McKee Street. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Knop. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanza?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right. And that'll go on the first meeting in September, the City Council.
Which is actually September 7th with Monday being Labor Day.
Thank you. We'll take about a two-minute break here. We'll move right on then to ordinance 21-37, amending the Batavia City Code related to parking regulations, Title III Business and License Regulations, and Title X Zoning Code. And I see Drew is up there and ready to go. Hi, Drew.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. As you mentioned, this is a kind of a return item for the zoning code, and it's a new segment to address the changes that would be necessary to the city code regarding the parking fee in lieu. Essentially, the ordinance before you tonight has three zoning components. The first is to allow new buildings and additions, for buildings with four or fewer residential units, to pay a fee in lieu, which with this ordinance would be set at $10,000 for any improvements that would require parking that they would opt to not put the parking in with. The second item is to basically rename our parking requirements that are in the code now as parking minimums and to establish a new parking maximum that would be applicable to several zoning districts. And essentially, that would be requiring that any parking in greater amount of 125% would require a conditional use approval by the city council through the zoning process to allow that. As proposed, the single and two-family districts would be exempt, along with the L.I., Light Industrial and Chi-I General Industrial District. The next change is to slightly modify the multifamily residential requirements, as we've discussed previously at previous meetings. And then there's also a minor technical change in naming the convention center, which is also a exempt use in the maximums. in naming the convention center, which is also a exempt use in the maximums to conference center, which is what we use in the zoning code. The plan commission did conduct a public hearing on July 21st at their virtual meeting. No members of the public addressed the commission, but the commission did discuss these proposed changes. Overall, they were satisfied with the information that staff did provide regarding the proposed changes to multifamily. They did feel that the, it was, there was enough information there from other municipalities to verify that that is a acceptable change. They did feel comfortable with the proposed changes to add a fee in lieu. They felt that that would accomplish our conference of plan goals of trying to consolidate parking in the downtown area, and they understood that purpose. And they did feel that the, while the fee in lieu is not in the zoning code, they did feel that that was a reasonable justification based on our other zoning, or true cost of building parking. The commission also did like the idea of a parking maximum with the remedy of the conditional use process if somebody needs to propose a larger parking lot. They did note, as in your discussions, about how we do have a lot of excess parking on Randall Road, and they did feel that this was a good solution to try and mitigate that in the future, as well as hopefully encourage redevelopment of some of those parcels. They did also discuss the proposed exemptions. They did feel that the residential exemptions were appropriate. We identified in our discussion with them how single-family properties in particular would be affected by a proposed change, so they did feel that that was appropriate to exempt those. They'd also do discuss the LI and GI districts, and through their discussion regarding the parking maximums, they did feel that a parking maximum shouldn't be imposed on those properties in order to help facilitate basically attracting larger tenants that might, or have higher employment demands or employment uses, especially for manufacturing, and how many of our buildings are built for speculative purposes. They didn't necessarily want to limit the potential by just building for warehouse parking essentially. They also noted that there's very little public parking and very little opportunities for off-street parking, so that was another reason that they felt justified to remove that. So the plan commission did vote, by a vote of 5 to 0, to recommend the approval of the ordinance before you tonight. And as always with the alternatives, you can recommend approval to the full city council of this ordinance as presented, make changes, or send it back to the plan commission if you feel additional research necessary. And we did identify several impacts regarding the proposed changes, that they would allow for greater centralized parking at the DMU district, that the reducing of the parking requirements in the multifamily may benefit the cost of parking, or cost of development of those type of developments. They did also feel that the parking maximums would have positive environmental benefits and stormwater benefits to the, and we did identify that parking maximums might cause some addition, or the, as presented, the parking maximums through the conditional process would, or could cause some additional friction when people are looking to build larger parking with their development. So if you do take action on this item tonight, we can put it on the agenda for September 7th, and the plan commission did vote 5 to 0 to approve, and staff does recommend approval as presented tonight.
Does anybody in the room or online have any questions or comments on this one? I think it's pretty much what we talked about the last time we discussed this at our level, and I think it's what we want to move towards as far as parking regulation.
The only other thing I would note is, you know, we didn't really have this in the ordinance, but is, do we want to have an effective date on this? Because, you know, we may have some developments that are midstream in the process. If they've gotten their permit applications in, then they're exempt, but, you know, a good example would be the project we approved tonight. You know, do we want to, you know, delay the actual implementation for, say, 30 days or something like that, so that we don't catch certain projects in the crossfire essentially?
It probably wouldn't be a good idea to, well, if we approved the other project at the meeting before we did this ordinance, we just couldn't put this on consent agenda. Is there any other things that you know of that would, this would affect?
We have a couple of industrial, well, I guess the industrial buildings won't be affected by it, so that'll be okay. Trying to think of what else we had that's, that's there. That's midstream, so I think mostly, most of the other things probably are going to be okay, but now I'm thinking about it. But I just didn't know, I just didn't know if you wanted to have a delay in case somebody did come in with an actual project in the meantime.
Why don't we put it on the second agenda in September, for the second city council meeting in September?
All right.
Okay.
And then we can go to, probably, if we approve this, then we can go to consent agenda on it.
Alderman has her hand up.
Abby, go ahead.
Scott asked my question, but I guess that would, to follow up, what would the implication be for a commercial development on Randall Road? Would that impact that development?
A new development?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, it would, it would. As soon as we implement, as soon as we pass this ordinance, it would be, it would be law, and they would have to comply with that. The only, the only exception would be is if somebody already has a building permit in. I believe our zoning code has exceptions for projects that are, you know, pending review, but maybe not issued. So they would be, you know, exempted. But, you know, if somebody came in the day after the council meeting approves it, then, you know, then it's effective immediately, and they would have to revise their plans or get the conditional use if they don't comply.
Would that affect the other lots that are in the plan that we passed on to council tonight?
It would, yes.
Yes.
I apologize, I think I'm just tired, because then I'm rereading this and not understanding it the same way, because I keep saying that this is for the downtown mixed-use district. With the exception of the light industrial, general industrial, with the minimum spaces required at the end of the document, pages, page nine and 10 and 11, how much does that change for a development outside of the downtown use?
Okay, so hopefully I can try and clarify that. So there's kind of three different areas that we're making changes to. The items that are focused solely on the DMU district is the add, the addition of a fee in lieu. So you would only be able to pay a fee in lieu of providing additional parking for a building addition, or a new building within the downtown mixed-use district only. So that's one area of change. The other main area of change is the addition of the parking maximums. So the parking maximums would apply to the LI, or would apply to essentially all of the zoning districts, except the LI district, the GI district, and the single families, so the R1L, or R1N, R1H, and then the R2 district, which is our two-family district. So the parking maximum would apply to the DMU district as it's written right now. So if somebody proposed a large parking field in the downtown, it would be subject to that maximum requirement. And then the off-street parking requirements, the changes that we're making for the multifamily, that would apply to multifamily in the DMU district and outside of the DMU. So in the R5 district, the R4 district, anybody that's proposing a multifamily building would be subject to that slightly reduced parking requirement for the two or more bedrooms. And that, that's kind of how the changes affect the downtown. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does. And then my own confusion, I'm sorry Drew. It was, the table at the bottom was the maximums, not the minimums, and I just glossed over that major word. So it's me being tired. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, I will make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 21-37, amending the Batavia City Code related to parking regulations, Title III Business and License Regulations, and Title X Zoning Code, City Batavia applicant.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanza?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you. And that can go on consent on the second meeting in September. Okay, up next is item 12, which is ordinance 21-48, proposing establishment of special service area 56 for the Fox Valley Business Park, east of South River Street and north of the Prairie Bike Path, or Prairie Path Bike Trail.
Yes. Thank you. The, this is kind of deja vu for only two aldermen, because only two aldermen here were on when this was originally approved. This was approved back in 2011, 2012 as part of the Fox Valley Business Park development. And unfortunately, the ordinance wasn't recorded according to statute in the prior time, in the appropriate time, and so therefore it did not come into effect. And this, again, is a backup special service area. So we did have conversations with the developer of this property, the owner of vacant lots, and they were in concurrence with moving ahead and trying to recreate the special service area. During those discussions, we also talked about, including the other lots that were not part of the redevelopment, and the, where the existing buildings are, because they are tributary to those detention areas, and therefore they should, you know, be also partly responsible for, you know, maintain, maintenance of those areas. So we are including all the properties within the entire development, both the original phase and the redevelopment phase. So that, that is what this is including, all those properties on the map that you can see and that's attached to your packet. This is going to be a backup special service area. It would not be implemented unless the property ownership and the property owners association do not maintain the detention area. And if they do, then we would go ahead and implement that special service area, and then the tax would then pay for those costs. So we are recommending approval of trying to recreate special service area number 56. There is a timeframe calendar in the packet that gives you the idea of what we have to do to create this. There's a whole process and notification series that we have to do. So we are recommending approval of this and moving forward with creating special service area number 56.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? You know, this has only happened, I think, a couple times since I've been on the city council where we've had an FSA set up and it didn't get recorded, or some, some technicality happened, and then we had to go back and do it again. Okay, no comments. I will make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 21-48, proposing establishment of a special service area number 56 for a Fox Valley Business Park.
Second.
Miller.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanza?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next, for direction of earlier change in the agenda, we'll move to 14, which is discussion of One Washington Place project update. Laura?
When we were here last Tuesday, the developer shared with us that they had not yet heard final word from their lender with regard to the construction loan, but that the decision was expected toward the end of last week. And on Thursday, we were notified that they have received a commitment from the lender for the construction loan. City council asked that in the event that the loan was approved, that city staff work with the lender to determine the effect of the delay on the project timeline, and to come back to city council with what the revision of that timeline would look like, as well as have the, our city attorney, who is advising us on TIF matters here, who worked with us on the redevelopment agreement, to advise city council of what their possible alternatives were, given the situation in which we now find ourselves. And so with us today are Dave Petzelt, again, from the developer, and David Silverman of Silverman Cross Mahoney, who will present us, I think that's where we'll turn next, is for David to present you with what the possible alternatives that city council could take with regard to its rights and obligations under the RDA. David?
Okay, thank you, Laura. First of all, I don't think I've met most of you, so it's good to meet you, and thank you for allowing our firm to assist you in this project. As Laura mentioned, we were brought on to help negotiate the third amended redevelopment agreement, and also the access agreement with the bank, and then the ECF re, so that's, that's kind of how I came into this. It's probably been about 18 months, I suppose. So understanding that the developer's timeline has slipped, and has gone, they've gone out of compliance with certain benchmarks that are set in the redevelopment agreement, I've had a number of conversations with Laura, and with Laura and Scott, and we've all kind of taken a look at this agreement. And I think we're presented with four options at this point. First option is kind of, you know, in any scenario, is the do-nothing option. That's not an option that I would necessarily recommend. It allows, you know, the dates could slip further, and we begin to lose control.
I've heard that they can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Is that, I hope it's better?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds better.
And, and the do-nothing option, you know, you kind of lose track of the deadlines, and you begin to have arguments that could be made by the developer as to waiver, stopple, and things like that, as to not moving forward. Even though the agreement provides for non-waiver, it could complicate the issue if, if we get into a dispute with the developer. Second option, there's a provision in the redevelopment agreement that provides that the agreement may be terminated by the city without cause at this point in time. But in order to do that, the language that's been in this agreement and the prior agreements is that you would have to reimburse the developer for their costs, and the, and the cost clock started to tick with the First Amendment of the RDA. We understand that those costs are significant, and because of the significance of those costs, that may not be a realistic option at this point. The next possible alternative is to provide a notice to the developer of your intent to terminate the agreement. And the redevelopment agreement provides that you can, you can give this notice of intent to terminate, and then the developer essentially has two choices. They can, one, agree and walk away, or, two, they can begin a cure process. It's very similar to a, all, most agreements provide for, if there is a perceived breach in the agreement, that notice be given to the other party, and then there's an opportunity to cure. And that's, that's kind of how this process would go also. You would give a notice of termination, and then the developer would either walk away, or they would begin to cure the defect or the default to try to catch up with the dates that have slipped. And they would have to exercise due diligence to catch up with those dates, and I would, I would assume that we would work with the developer to put in place some sort of monitoring process to determine whether or not they have used due diligence in their achieving the next steps to get up to the construction. And then the fourth alternative is to essentially amend, once again, the redevelopment agreement to reset the dates to something that's more realistic, given the developer's situation at this point. more realistic, given the developer's situation at this point in time. So those are the four alternatives as we see them, and I think um, you know, Laura thought we'd have some discussion on that and maybe some discussion from the developer also.
Um, so that it is apparent to council what uh, an amendment of the, or modification to the timeline looks like. At this point, um, with your permission, I wanted to allow the developer to present what that modified timeline looks like.
Okay, we can do that?
Laura, do you have it on the screen or the monitor?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that up there.
And do uh, those aldermen that uh, are here, do you have paper copies or can I share a paper copy with you?
Sure.
I got one.
Okay, thank you.
Why, we are uh, waiting for Laura to pull that up, uh, good evening, for the record, my name is David Patzelt, seventy-seven North First Street, Geneva, Illinois. On behalf of uh, One Washington Place LLC and, and the Shodin Group, uh, as requested last week when we had met. Uh, I have uh, worked with staff to address the, uh, address the schedule. And uh, what you have before you on the screen, or was on the screen? I think that right arrow on there, Laura, that in the middle. Terrific, thank you. Uh, and for the, those of you who are virtually, it, it should be on your uh, screen now. Uh, this, what I tried to do in this chart uh, is identify in the left-hand column the, what I will call the schedule activity or the uh, activity item that appears in the uh, RDA. The second column working from the left to the right, the second column identifies generally the paragraph in which uh, it is identified in the uh, in the RDA just for cross-reference. Then the next two columns uh, identify the number of days that that activity uh, is, uh, is scheduled for per the RDA. And then in the right-hand column of that, those two, it gives you the actual calendar date that the completion would have to be that you would have to obtain that, by that date, complete that activity. Then the next two columns where it says per RDA, third amendment with financing extension, paragraph one oh four B. Within the current third amendment uh, to the RDA, there is in a, uh, in a lot, what I'll call an allowance or an option for the developer to have a ninety-day extension for fi- for obtaining financing, which uh, we, uh, we believe that we meet. So those, uh, those two columns are in essence the same, uh, same description. The only item that is added there, you can see is there's an optional extension for financing, which in essence pushes the last two-thirds of the schedule out an additional ninety days. Then the last two columns on the right uh, give you a modified date as to what date that the, uh, we believe that we can complete that specific uh, activity. The uh, line in yellow you'll see is a date that's really the only date controlled by the city or city staff and not a date that we can really control. And that, that item is in essence the review of the permit application, which the city staff has ninety days to do. And uh, so we kept that constant, however, identified it in yellow that if there was an interest on city staff's perspective and/or city council to try to expedite the schedule even further, they could do so with that, uh, with that line item. However, in this schedule calculation, we are not asking any favors from the staff or the council to expedite their portion of the schedule. The bottom half of the schedule you'll see is green, and then you'll see one of the lines is an extremely dark green. And the purpose of the green was that, green meaning good, is that those are the activities that you'll see we are meeting or exceeding the original third amendment RDA calendar date. So in essence, what I am suggesting with this schedule is, although we are getting a late start in the beginning, we will be making up the dates throughout the schedule and will complete the project within the already approved RDA timeline. So we in essence are squeezing, crunching, or reducing the number of days for us to complete the project and so that we can complete it on time. So in essence, good news, if you look towards the end dates, when the project gets completed, we're meeting that schedule. The bad news is, as we already know, and that the topic of the discussion this evening, is that we missed some of the early dates uh, here early on with the submittal of the drawing, uh, submittal of the permits. So I can go through every line if you'd like, but I think that really kind of concludes is that, good news is, there's no delay to the end of the project. Um, we don't need to amend those dates at the end uh, to complete the project. I would suggest that we keep those dates fixed, um, so I'm not asking you to extend the overall length of the project. Uh, and although we would probably want to amend those dates that we have missed so far yet to date, which would be those dates that are shown in, I'll call it the white column, the furthest, uh, the furthest right, right-hand column. Hopefully that uh, explains it, the schedule to you. And um, Alderman New York, you had indicated that you just didn't want to see the whole thing slide to the end. So I'd heard your request, and I'm hoping that this clearly indicates that we just didn't slide the schedule to the right, that we fixed the end dates and in essence have not changed that, uh, that, that, that last or the completion dates.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's no secret that I haven't been a huge fan of this project for a while, but I'm impressed of what you've been able to do here and actually what's written down here is you'll exceed what you agreed to before and, and I'm impressed with that, so, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, go ahead.
I um, before seeing this, and I was actually going to ask the council to serve Shodin with the notice of default or hearing even the, the, the lawyers or there are attorneys' suggestions. And I said, it's nothing against you, it's nothing against Shodin, it is about protecting the city. Cause that, I know that you guys would do the same thing for us. I, that, that is what I would like, I wish, I said this last week, we should have served him thirty days ago. And I would still like to see as a notice of protecting us from before, cause if we don't follow the rules, how can we expect the next developer to, to do what we ask if we don't follow these things and make sure that people are doing what we need them to do?
So you're saying to serve them with a notice to terminate or that they're in breach?
That they're in breach.
Is that different?
So one of the, I, I wanted to say, one of, looking at the effects of that, the effect of serving with the, and it would be the notice um, to terminate um, for the failure to meet the requirements prior to transfer of the land. The issue with that is it's sort of like open-ended, because at that point then, the developer is given the cure period of they have to start showing progress on um, curing within the thirty days, and it's then beyond that too. So it's not like there is a specific date provided by when they have to uh, apply for the building permit. Whereas if we amend the schedule, then there's a date certain and we can condition the agreement to the amendment on consequences, and I'll, I'll pass to David to talk about that. The, like the, either um, like a truncated cure period or an automatic termination if conditions aren't met.
Yeah, I, there's, I guess a couple of things we could talk about and discuss with the developer if you care to amend the redevelopment agreement. Uh, one thing that you might see in a contract is what's called liquidated damages, so that if they don't meet certain uh, benchmarks, then they pay uh, essentially uh, for breach uh, in the terms of liquidated damages. It's usually a, a per day or per week or per month, you know, we see them a lot in construction contracts. The second thing that we could discuss with them would be just if, you know, it, it's probably one of the big, um, one of the big milestones in the schedule is the notice to proceed and just say, look, guys, if you don't make this notice to proceed date, uh, the, the agreement's just over and there's no opportunity to cure that default. I mean, that's another way that you could do it, to, to provide some certainty. Now, obviously, both of those uh, solutions would require discussion with the developers, and I, I have no idea whether they would be agreeable to that or not, but Laura and I kind of put our heads together and thought those are two, you know, potential solutions to try to get around this period. Because I, I kind of agree with, you know, first of all, the alderman had the question about whether it's a notice of default or nor- notice of termination. Really, in this contractor, one is about the same as the other. The, the notice of default language in the contract really seems to come up kind of a post-construction, post-comencing construction, where the notice of termination seems to be more added to that. They both end up in the same place. Uh, they both end up with the developer having thirty days uh, to commence the cure and then uh, uh, operating under a due diligence until the end of the period, so no matter what we call it, it has the same result.
Thought it was nine, ninety days? For to cure it, isn't that what it says here?
Well, there, there's, there's not a drop dead date, I don't think. I, I believe that they, they, they have the opportunity to move forward. As long as they're showing due diligence, in the termination section, basically the first period of time is thirty days uh, to give them a decision point as to how they want to move forward, and then they use due diligence after that, so. And, and also in the, in the default section to the contract, um, there's always, uh, there is again the opportunity to cure within that. There's no real drop dead date unless um, we can demonstrate that they haven't been exercising uh, due diligence in their pursuit.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay.
Dan?
So um, in the interest of full disclosure, I, I had worked for a bank that was acquired by Fifth Third, just wanted to throw that out there. Um, speaking in general, when I heard there was an issue with financing, being a guy that waits for things to get financed, uh, at the bank I work at, I, I'm used to delays when it comes to this stuff, and so this was a, a non-issue for me. And when I stepped back and then looked at, at the grand scheme of things, um, and I can see where the frustration is, and I, I've been frustrated with, with you before. But to be honest, my, my opinion of you has actually changed now, uh, because of this event. I now think you are a magician. If you pulled off this letter that quickly from a bank, um, either you have a wonderful banker, uh, or you're extremely lucky. Uh, and I want that luck to continue as you build this project. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, anybody online, Mike, go ahead?
Yes, I have a question, Dave. There's still a lot of variables out there, do you foresee any problems with labor or materials for the project?
Uh, I, if I said no, I think I'd be lying to you.
Right.
But I think those are um, as, and it, within our own office, I'll, I'll use the language that I, I use in, in our own offices, that us as project managers, our job is really to solve problems.
Right.
And to foresee those problems and work through the problems. And uh, we have, we do that every, every day. And so if, do I believe that we're going to have some supply chain issues? Yes, do I think that those are going to be so substantial that uh, it will delay the project? Absolutely not. Could it be, uh, again, I'd hate to bring up the Oswego project, it's one we've just recently been through, large project. Uh, we've all heard that there was appliance shortages. So uh, yes, we had people moving into Oswego and they were scheduled to be in, in, in an apartment that maybe that apartment didn't have a refrigerator. So, you know, what do you do, you go down to the next apartment, that's not going to be occupied for another month, and you bring the refrigerator over to the unit that's going to be occupied. So to me, that's a problem solver, but yes, that is a supply chain, uh, supply chain issue. So uh, short answer is, yes, I believe there will be and could be some uh, manpower and material issues, but I, I don't see that that's going to stop us or prevent us from meeting, uh, from meeting this, uh, the schedule. Uh, so I'm, I'm confident in it. Um, and we've been through the last year and a half-ish with the pandemic and a lot of the materials, and um, everybody's reading about lumber is, I'll say collapsing, the price is collapsing, and why is it collapsing? That's a supply and demand issue. Nobody's, uh, there seems to be, nobody wants to buy lumber now.
Right.
So that, to me, that's, it's a trickle effect, right? Appliances had the same issues that lumber had, they jumped up, you couldn't get them, now all of a sudden they're coming back into the, uh, supply chain. So I, short answer, yes, there will be issues, but no, it's not going to delay the, delay the project at all. And we feel confident in it, that we want to move forward with the project, especially now with the financing, that, the commitment that we have with a lender that we have worked with for many years that we feel comfortable with, uh, with working. So, uh, and I believe that lender who has worked with your legal team and city staff on the various agreements. Uh, and I would say that your staff and legal team are satisfied with the work product that has come from that, uh, from that lender, so. Good, thank you.
Okay, I know we got some hands up there, Tony, go ahead.
Uh, thank you Alan, yeah. Um, what uh, the, the, to, to terminate without cause, um, what kind of reimbursement costs are we talking about? Just so we know.
So uh, the developer provided us with um, their costs, um, which do not include their in-house staff time, and the estimate was three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That's what has been spent without plans?
That's correct, and that is not from day one of this project, that is from, um, I believe it's the uh, January of two thousand and eighteen for the, for the, uh, the agreement, so if
Yeah.
If you'd like to talk about prior to the eight, uh, two thousand and eighteen, uh, we can talk several hundreds of thousands of dollars more than that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's where I kind of have a problem, because now we're talking, you know, we're coming up on four, soon to be five years. Uh, well, of course, there's going to be expenses, this, you know, we're talking about doing a fourth agreement now. So what's the, what's to convince us that the fourth agreement won't hold up? Um, you know, they, I think I spoke the last time and, and made it clear, you know, we have a different council. Uh, there, when, the last vote, when it was seven to seven, um, there were four council members that are no longer here and there's four new council members. Just so happens that two of the votes were no and two were yes. Um, we are elected uh, to represent the people of this town. Um, I think it is only right that we take, we, we have a uh, a vote on this with the new council, because I would hate to see the largest project go forward when the majority of the council that represents the interests of the people of this town uh, is not, uh, adhered to.
Any amendment, any amendment would need to be voted on. Any amendment, any amendment would need to be voted on.
Exactly.
Jen, go ahead.
Thanks, Alan. I have a question where we talked about or where we was talking about modification to the timeline and one of the things that was suggested was notice not to proceed because they didn't meet something within the timeline. If that happens, are we on, do we have to pay for the cost that had been accrued up until that time, not only including obviously the $350,000 that was just mentioned and the amounts prior to that, but also the amounts for the drawings?
That's an excellent question, Alderman Baron, and I first want to clarify something that the notice to proceed is something that the developer provides to us and it comes in along with the application for building permit. And so the suggestion was that if the notice to proceed was not provided by a certain date, that there were consequences as a result of that. And what was the second part of your question? Can you just remind me?
So if we were, you know, if they were to proceed and then something happens where something wasn't met down the timeline and we just say, okay, the agreement is over, are we on the hook for the cost of the developer up to that point?
No, the agreement provides that termination by the city, we are only on the hook for costs if we terminate without cause. So if there were to be a future delay, then that is where we would provide them with notice of that delay. They would have the opportunity to cure, but in the event that they could not cure that, we have the right to terminate the agreement and it is without any responsibility to the developer. There's no there we're not obligated to pay the developer's costs is is basically what that means.
Abby?
Thanks, Alan. To clarify with with option four of amending the RDA to reset the dates in the event that we can't come to an agreement with the developer with these new terms, these new dates and any other clauses and contingencies that we want to work in to protect ourselves against future delays or if if it's brought forward and we don't approve it, is it are we responsible for those costs again?
Well, if you if you if there were an amendment to the RDA that it is proposed and you vote that RDA down, you wouldn't know that would not make you responsible to pay the developer's cost. What I would assume the next step would be would be to send a notice of termination to the developer under the contract, which would then start his, you know, cure period of of a period of time that's necessary using due diligence. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Abby and Jen, can you take your hands down if you're not going to ask another question? Thank you. Alan. Mark, go ahead.
So, yeah, so I guess this goes to, you know, if it's voted on and there was a vote down, we go to terminate, then they basically fall back to the third amendment. And basically, at that point, they just have to start showing, yeah, we're working on our drawings, we're working to cure that, and they can then fall on they can get back on track, which Dave has already said that they're going to do. So. Basically, the way I read it right now, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, you're basically treating this as though you've been given a notice of termination and you're going to go and and accelerate everything so that you're on track in April anyway. Or, Mark, yeah, April.
In essence, that's what it is. We're having a gentleman's discussion about, Dave, you and your organization are behind schedule, what are you going to do about it? And was it a formal 30-day letter or formal letter that came across and we had 30 days to respond? No, it's not. But I I agree and feel comfortable that you take these dates here in the right far right-hand column and in an amendment, you want to put a specific date in that if you're not submitting plans by X date, which will come up relatively soon, and those are the dates we're worried about, if you don't submit the plans, you want a statement that says it's over? That's fine. You want a statement that says you can buy 10, 15, 20 days at $1,000 a day or $2,000 a day to to give me some pain and suffering to get the damn things done, get the plans done and turned in? That's fine. We're willing to do that. So that I it's no surprise that we missed the dates and we don't need a formal letter to tell us that we missed the dates, I guess.
I mean, that, you know, something like that, I I think that I know this this whole matter has been, I guess I'll call it controversial, or there's been differences of opinion within the city. But what he's offered, I think, could go a long way towards either getting this done or getting out of the deal so that you can free up your property to move on to another developer or whatever it is that you decide to do. I mean, you know, from a from a legal perspective, if if we do give the notice to terminate without an agreement for this drop dead date or something, we could be fighting about this thing for a long time and you get uncertainty with the date. So I I know that it could be a hard vote to, again, amend this RDA, but that I think what what the developers just made is a pretty big concession that could give the city a lot of comfort in making sure that he gets his job done or goes on to the next development project and you can go on to the next developer.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to see some teeth in it. I mean, Dave just said, put some teeth in it. It sounds like, Dave, you're committed.
Yeah.
And I mean, and I think that was a question that some people had was, are you? And if you're going to say that you're going to accept penalties in there and we add some penalties and you're not meeting these dates, then I think we need to put some teeth into it. It would I think it would help appease those that think that it's not going to get done and think that it's going to drag out.
If I can also add to that, if there was any thought or inkling that we were not committed to this project, I I didn't hesitate when staff wanted to know what the expenditures were since the First Amendment. To me, spending the $350,000 plus to me shows some commitment where I haven't earned a dollar back yet and the project dies. And that's just as of, again, 2018. And, yeah, we 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 believe in the project. We continue to believe in the project. We see pretty pictures all the time. We've tried to take those pretty pictures in our own mind, in our own four walls of our office, try to put that into a model to make sure that we 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 understand what we're what we want to physically build and what this thing is going to look like. We can draw the two dimensional all the time, but that's why we we do a model. You didn't require a model, nobody's seen the model, staff has seen some pictures of of the model and but that that's what we're talking about. That's that's the project that is in front of you this evening and I don't know how often you get to see one and true to scale what the building is going to look like. But if you don't like what you see in front of you, then it then do whatever you can to vote it down, I guess.
I, you know, maybe a suggestion would be, if you will, to we give us a couple of weeks to negotiate and and come up with a fourth amendment to the RDA with dates and with significant consequences. And we'll put two things on the agenda. We'll put that on the agenda and then if that gets voted down, the next thing on the agenda would be to send the termination notice. And, you know, you guys can can figure it out that way, but that that might be a way to move forward and, you know, give give us at staff level a chance to see what we can do in agreement and in agreement to give you guys a little bit more comfort. And if at the end of the day, that comfort level is not there, you can then vote to to send the termination.
I appreciate the offer, David. You had said a couple of weeks in there. I can tell you to get to this schedule, I've had to get commitments and buy-in from structural engineers and architects. And the commitment was that we needed to get them started on September 1. And on this schedule, I had to push them to September 7. So if you if you do it a couple of weeks out, I'm I'm hurting myself here where I've got them right now on the on the baited hook, waiting to start the night after September September 7th, so or the day after September 7th.
Joe?
When I came in, I was not happy to see that scale model. I would have been much happier on November 15th, see a budget. I would have been much happier on April 14th, see bid drawings, and I would have been much happier on July 13th to see the bids. Those were the dates and the commitments in the RDA, separate from any financing. The Section 102(c) did not say after we see financing commitments from the bank, then we'll start on the budget, then we'll do the drawings, then we'll get the bids. It said from the date of the effectiveness, August 17, 90 days for the budget, 150 days for the bid drawings, 90 days for the bids. We're six weeks after that and we have a beautiful scale model. That having been said, there is a lot on the line. I'm not one that wants to go put the citizens of Batavia on the hook for anybody's costs that weren't theirs. Not doing anything, I think you you said it right off the bat, is the wrong thing. That's the wrong thing to do. Keenan's made a good point. We need to send a message to the developers who are going to work in the city of Batavia that when we have an RDA, we'll stand by our side, but by golly, you have to stand by your side. And I think the notice to terminate, while the terminology terminate is in there, you've already made commitments to fix it. The cure is in place. I think at this point, it's it's not doing nothing and it's doing something and we know it keeps the project moving forward with an accelerated timeline, with somebody paying a little more attention to what's going on, making sure things are getting done when they're supposed to be getting done. I would support with what Keenan's saying and voting to send the notice to terminate just so we have the clock started, just so we send the message to everybody around that we're watching what's going on and we're protecting our taxpayers.
Just to be clear, that alternative does not include these other measures that were mentioned that we could put into an agreed-upon amendment, such as immediate termination for not receiving a notice to proceed by a date certain and liquidated damages that they could use to buy more time in the event that they don't provide us with a notice to proceed. The notice of termination and opportunity to cure is, I'm going to call it amorphous because all they have to do is be demonstrating that they're making progress. And I'm happy that the developer is committed to feeling better about establishing a clear timeline where that that we all have these expectations as and and each of us signing that.
Hold on, I had Leah first. Go ahead.
Tony. I just want to make sure I understand. So I think our legal counsel is suggesting that they come together with staff to come up with a new RDA that we feel comfortable with?
It is an amendment to the original RDA, so it won't be another 81-page document. It will likely be a revision of this Section 102. So it'll be limited in pages, you know.
So an amendment, an amendment to the current RDA?
Yes.
But when that was suggested, Mr. Patel said that they don't, he doesn't have time to wait for us.
That was the two-week period, so if we can bring that back to council next week, he said that that would be preferable because when you talk about two weeks to a month, that could change things with his concrete supplier schedule.
Right. But we've been waiting, as Joe said, many weeks for them, so it for us to have comfort, it seems only fair that they should wait for us.
If if is if we don't need the time, though, I mean, is there a reason why we we need the time? If staff and our attorney are able to draft an amendment that the developer agrees upon, we can just put that on next Tuesday's agenda.
If we feel comfortable with that and we're not rushing to, you know, to get what the developer is now demanding from us.
Most of the work is done in this spreadsheet.
I have another question, and this could be a little bit in the weeds. So we are still waiting on the drawings, which means we do not know the final cost yet of this project.
That is, that's correct.
So what happens when we get the final cost and perhaps it exceeds what you have been financed?
At that point, I would say the project's dead, but we have done budgeting on the project. We have the preliminary plans that have been done. It is now the permit plans. And so for for us to want to invest the $650,000 in a set of plans, we 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 have to believe that we've got the number pretty pretty good under under control. But there's always that crazy thing that, you know, could could happen. So but per the RDA as it is today, without any amendment, that it's no different, that we go down, we spend the 650, we draw the plans, we go out for bid and lumber takes off and hits 300% of what lumber costs and it throws the project out of whack. We that is then our we have where we can walk away and say, you know what, we're done it, we're done. So we're not losing that. It's still in the RDA as it is today and it would remain, it would remain in there.
Okay, before we take any more questions, I have three that I have to ask before we go any further. First off, and Joe brought this up, the first date that we have in there is November 15th of 2020. Complete budgets and review them 90 days from effective date. Did that was that date met? Did we get budgets from them? Did they present that?
No.
But it's done. So it doesn't it would it's a line that would say it's been it's been completed. So we have completed our budgets, we've reviewed them, and so that that activity is completed, albeit.
And the bid drawings were done by April 14th of this year?
No, so the bid drawings were not done by April 14th. The far right column shows that they will be done. The number of days is at 120. Per the RDA, we are to do them in 150, so we've reduced the time by 30 days. We will have the plans to you by 1/5 of 2022.
But that's not 120 days from 8/17.
That is, that is 120 days, not from 8/17. It would be from 9/7 when we have an amended or proposed amendment to the to the RDA.
Okay. And then the obtained bids deadline is submit the permit application and provide the notice to proceed. That was due on 7/13/2021 and that did not happen.
Correct. And just so you're crystal clear on it, so it was per the RDA on 7/13/2021. However, because there is Paragraph 104, Pren B, we're entitled to a 90-day extension. It would have needed to be done by 10/11 of '21.
Okay. Is there some did we have a an optional extension for the financing submitted to us? Was that asked?
We we I'll jump in.
I don't think we had any discussion about it.
We don't. My interpretation is that we don't have to request it of you, but.
Okay. But I mean, if we're pushing the timeline back, I think there should be open communication that somebody's asking to have the timeline pushed back. And, you know, those things right there, I mean, I've been a great supporter of this from day one, but that really bothers me as we sit here and look at the spreadsheet that those happen the way they happen. And the frustration for me, I mean, I was really frustrated last week when we were here and we didn't have an answer on the financing. And, you know, my frustration is still there tonight. And when I see things like this that are in this document and, you know, there was no remedy or. and, you know, there was no remedy, or there was no ask for a remedy at that point, that bothers me. And I, you know, I mean, I know that if we decide that we're going to do anything to terminate or stop it at this point, that still gives them the opportunity to make that right. And then that sets us back, but also puts them in a position where they can get that done. If they get that done, then we move forward. So I don't know which one delays the project more, which one makes it worse, whether we come to an agreement, you know, with a willing partner to try to get this right and move this forward, or whether we decide to go the legal route on it, and see if they can fail on their own and kill it. I mean, that's kind of where I feel like we're at. And that is a real frustrating point for me to be at right now with this.
What are the advantages of the second strategy?
I don't know that there are advantages, and that's what I'm trying to work through in my mind right now.
Because I think there are advantages to the first strategy about reestablishing the timeline.
And that's where I look at that, and I think of the timelines that are here. And I will tell you, there will be no changing anything that we approve in this next RDA. If that doesn't work, and those dates don't get met, it's done. There's no liquidated damages, there's nothing else. If they don't meet the dates that are there in an amendment or a timeline, I'm done.
Alan.
Mark.
The fault here is of the elected officials prior to May, so not those that just came on in May, for not asking, and for staff for not telling us on April 14th that there was a breach in the contract. So that's where this lies.
Yeah, and that's, I think, one of my biggest frustrations, is that we're, at this point today, almost into September, and that's a default that's been there since April.
Yep.
Not to feed your fire, but if you feel that way, terminate. Pass a motion to terminate, and then it's over. I'm not trying to jump on your side, or help you out.
I understand that. My problem is, is I have wanted to see this built since pretty much it was conceived. And to stop this now, and to start this process all over again, and go through how many more years to get whatever we get out of it, do we want to roll those dice? And that's kind of where I feel I'm at. Tony had his hand up, and he's going to be next. Go ahead, Tony.
You're on mute.
You're muted, Tony.
Sorry. Yeah, to your point, Alan, too, this, an amendment to the agreement, which in essence is the fourth agreement, then. We're talking about pushing back the effective date more than a year, and finishing the project ahead of what was scheduled. I don't have confidence in that, that there's not going to come back for a fifth agreement. But the question that I wanted to ask was, we were given four options in the beginning, and I agree, doing nothing is not an option. Knowing my previous question about what those costs were, would be reimbursed, that in my eyes, that's not an option, because that would be charging the people, the taxpayers of Batavia, for something they didn't want in the beginning. So that's not an option. So at least two options. Amend the RDA, which here we are, the fourth time to amend this. Let's say, and correct me if I didn't hear you correctly, let's say that an amendment doesn't pass, and we then go to a notice of intent to terminate. In doing that, did I hear you correctly in saying, it really doesn't have any teeth, because there's no defining dates on that? And so as long as they can say, we're working on it, so be it, you know?
It's more than just saying it. They do actually demonstrate it.
So if that, you know, it's a domino effect, you know? Already, we've got three dates that haven't been met. Without an amended agreement, the next dates aren't going to be met. And so are we going to be on a continuous, you know, hamster wheel there of, you know, we gave you a notice to terminate because you missed another date? Oh, I'm working on it, I'm working on it. I got a big problem with that. It's, I feel like we've been put in a very difficult position here.
Yeah, and then I think if we do the notice to terminate, it pushes back, and it pushes back. What ends up happening is, we end up killing it slowly, and then lose the time on the TIF. And that's what would happen with it.
So am I correct in that the notice of intent to terminate, there is no teeth to it? So why even have that?
It's not true that there's no teeth to it. So for instance, it would be reasonable to expect that if there was a, let's say, 150-day period in the third amendment to produce the drawings and submit the building application, it would be reasonable that the developer should be able to complete it in that time. And so, for instance, couldn't do it in 30 days, but certainly be reasonable for us to expect that within 150 days that he would be able to complete those drawings. And at that point, we would say, because you haven't submitted it, we're going to say that that's termination for cause.
So why bother having dates if you can just extend another 150 days?
Typically, this is a very typical provision in contracts under notice to cure, that it's a 30-day period, and it gets extended as long as the party is showing reasonable due diligence to cure within a reasonable period of time. Because you can't anticipate what the delay, what they're trying to accomplish, and that it might not even be possible to cure it within 30 days. And so in that case, it would just be automatic termination if they didn't get it done by that date, which we could have negotiated. But this is a very typical provision, and I guess I should let our legal counsel, you know, give his opinion about.
Right. I mean, I agree with everything Laura said, but I just think, again, the advantage of the amendment is that you have a definite drop-dead date. You don't have to continue to monitor. You don't have to maybe end up in a litigation setting at some point in time for a judge to determine whether or not they've been diligent during this period. Look, I mean, we're, you know, we're in a situation that there, you know, maybe some would say there aren't any good options. But as a practical matter, we have this agreement. That's what, it is what it is. And, you know, we need to try to now make the best of a bad situation. And I personally think, professionally think, that the best scenario that you guys can get into now is to put the developer under a definite timeline that gives you a right to terminate with no right to cure if he doesn't meet the dates that are agreed upon. I mean, you just walk away, and they can take us to court, but we'll win it quickly. So, you know, and you get the project done faster, because these new dates are going to be baked in, where if we just send the notice to terminate, they're going to refer back to the old dates in the agreement. And they might still build it in this timeframe, but they wouldn't be obligated.
Well, again, I would go back to saying what I've been saying for the last four times, or three times anyway. How many red flags do we need here? That's, you know, the council needs to decide, this new council, if this is something that we want.
I mean, with all due respect, you've got it. I mean, you've got this agreement, and that's what we need to deal with. I don't mean to be disrespectful at all, but we do have a contract, and it gives.
Yeah, and it was violated. And so we've got a problem with that.
Yeah. No, I completely understand, and I understand your frustration. But I'm just trying to give you some advice, maybe as to the best way out of it now. Because we do have this contract, so we need to deal with it. And like any contract, it gives rights and remedies to both sides.
Hey, Chris, you're next.
Yeah, so here's the main question. I mean, you talk about how we can just walk away, we'll win in court. I understand that. But let's talk about, once we get to the fact of substantial completion of garage 18 months from permit. If they don't make that date, we say we're just walking away, so then we just have a half-built monolith sitting there? Is that what we're looking at, then?
No. In fact, under the agreement, there is both bond that is issued that would ensure the completion of that project.
But it wouldn't necessarily be within the date. So once the ground is broken, then the dates really don't make any difference anymore, because they can take as long as they want.
If they fail to provide the garage within that period of time, we can exercise our rights under the bond to take the project over and finish it.
But at that point, we would be, for lack of a better word, stuck with this project as it stands. Because we would be taking the current building plans and running with it.
Absolutely. And that is as opposed to things that have been nicknamed Tyvek Tower, which is a scenario in which the developer goes belly up, and the project needs to be sold to someone else in order to be started again. Here, the city has the right to step in and complete the project so that it can get to the point of generating revenue, because we will already have bonds that we need to make payments on. And so it's a good position for us to be able to, in the event that the developer, for whatever reason, is unable to complete the project, we've given ourselves the right to step in and finish that project, so it can generate the revenue we need.
So the follow-up question to that, though, would be, basically, we're stuck, then let's say they don't make the July 10th, 2023 date for substantial completion of the garage 18 months from permit. We either let them keep on going, because we don't feel like taking it over, and then it just lasts longer, or then we have to take it over ourselves.
That's correct.
I mean, really, the only dates that really have anything of any great note would be before they break ground. Otherwise, the dates are kind of inconsequential.
There can be penalties on those construction dates, too. We have penalties on the water treatment plant. We could ask about that another.
We're still fighting over those.
It was so many years after it was done.
Did I see Abby's hand up? Did you want to say something, Abby?
No, I think Chris actually addressed my question about when we would have to transfer the rights back to the city to complete this. And I'm with Tony, I'm with Keenan and Joe. And, you know, what kind of teeth can we really put into the next deadline? I mean, January 5th is the next deadline, right? Am I reading that right? That they would, they'd have to submit their bid drawings? And then we could put a termination clause after that? If they don't hit that, can we move that date up? Can we make up for lost time there? And I'm.
Yes. The answer to that is yes. I think what we heard was that we want to put an automatic termination in there, or, and/or, a liquidated damages provision, such that if the developer was, let's say, within 15 days of being able to meet that deadline, they could pay for the additional time to meet the deadline. And if they didn't want to pay, the agreement would automatically terminate. At that point, we're just all done, and we are looking for a new developer on January 6th. Or they could pay the penalty and get the additional period of time.
So in our current agreement, as it stands, with all of these dates, the RDA, third amendment, we don't have any termination clauses attached to it?
Yes, we have the termination clause and default clause. And the termination clauses apply prior to construction beginning, and the default clauses apply once construction begins. And the termination clause provides that if we want to terminate for no cause, then we're on the hook for the developer's cost back to the first amendment. If we want to terminate for cause, because they have missed a deadline prior to transfer of the development property, then we provide them notice, and they have the opportunity to cure within 30 days. And if it is a matter that takes longer than 30 days, they have to show reasonable progress toward completion of that.
And who determines reasonable progress?
In any contract, that is to be, if there is a dispute, then that's resolved in court.
Keenan?
So if it takes 120 days to turn the drawings in, then why don't we just amend this new agreement, 120 days minus the 30? If you can get them done in 120 days, then you get served with a notice of default at 90. And then if you cure it within those 30 days, then we move on.
I mean, we could do that, but then, again, it takes away the uncertainty. I mean, it just starts, if I understood you correctly, we'd serve the notice of termination then, instead of now, and it just keeps the clock kind of going.
Well, if, with the new RDA, it would be 90 days, and then termination. So then we would have to send the notice of default, and then 30 days, right? Is that what I'm hearing, or is it?
Well, the way I would envision it, and I'm not sure about the 90 days. I mean, I'm just not looking at the schedule here. But if that's the thing, if they have to perform in 90 days, and they've agreed to perform in 90 days, and they don't, then it wouldn't be a default provision. It would be simply a right to terminate the agreement. I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mark?
So Dave, I'm only going to ask this because you just said it a few minutes ago, it came out of your mouth. You said, "Then terminate." So if we voted to terminate tonight, are you thinking that's based on cause? And then you're going to cure anyway? If we voted that way, what would your stance be?
If you wanted to terminate, I believe that I would try to take my rights and try to cure. To cure. And I don't believe that I would be held to 120 days, since in the contract, as Laura pointed out, you were giving me 150 days to do the drawings. I believe that a judge would say, you're entitled to the 150 days. If the city agreed to 150 days initially, why can't, why are they reducing that below 150 days now? So I believe I'd try to cure.
Yeah, and I think, Keenan, I know what you were trying to do. I would just, as long as there's penalties. If you're not done in 120 days from September 7th, then we're done. I mean, these are no leeway, no nothing, if that satisfies counsel.
And another RDA.
I'm not, what, it's interesting here, the debate, is that I'm not trying to say that I didn't meet, or, you know, that I didn't meet the dates. I see that. I thought I was going to somewhat be a little bit of a hero by saying, I'm going to meet the last date. I'm not going to, I'm still going to bring the project in by the date that was all planned, which helps the TIF, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of benefits to that.
And that's why I said that at the beginning. I was impressed. I mean, that's not what I expected when I saw that. And I happened to see the email just before I came over here, and I'm like, huh. I mean, I'll be honest, that is.
And it's not easy.
I can't imagine that it is.
And I'm committed to getting that done. But yeah, if you want to hold my feet to the fire on getting those plans turned in by January 5th... to the fire on getting those plans turned in by January 5th, yeah, I get it, I understand it. At the same time, I've, I've got a team lined up, ready to go, that know that their feet are going to be held to the fire as well. That's why, you know, if you need time, buy, give it time, and I got to tell my team to, to hold back. But if, if everybody's up and ready and ready to go, it's my, my opinion is, you pull the trigger and go for it. But I get it if you, you don't like the project from the beginning and you just want to continue to kill, try to kill the project, then go that route as well, so.
Laura, can I ask one question? Where is the property transfer in this timeline?
It would be, we would close on the property within 30 days after receiving the notice to proceed.
So what we're supposed to get on July 13th?
Yes.
That would then be on 3/6 of 22, if we were to go by the timeline and the proposed amendment?
Yes, and then also, similar to the developer having a forgiven extension in this 104B, if you can't close within the 30 days, you already have built-in an extension for, for closing. So, it could, that, that closing date can shift, if you need, if you need time.
I guess if, if I were to add another two cents into this, I would think that, you know, a drop dead date written into an amendment that says, "If this doesn't happen here, it's over," and you, you know, it's, it's a termination without a cure period, or without cure. And then I think the same thing in the second date, that if the, the submit permit application and notice to proceed, if those don't happen, it's done.
What was the prior date? I'm sorry, I thought that was what the first drop date.
The first, you know, the first, where there would be no cure available would be...
Bid drawings?
The, yeah, the bid drawings, which is January 5th. And I would say there should be a second one before we transfer property. If that doesn't get met and those, and the plans didn't come in, it would be over right then and there, with no, no cure.
Simply put, Alan, I was, I was taking all the white dates in that far-right column and having those as fixed dates.
Mm-hmm.
And no cure if I don't hit those dates. Plain and simple.
But as I understand it, once construction started, it's different then. Because then we kick in, as Laura mentioned, we kick into our rights under the performance bond. And then, if you remember, we had that agreement with the bank that we did too, that, so I mean, I think this, this ability to just flat-out terminate stops once we transfer the property, and then our, our right to complete under the performance bond in conjunction with the bank agreement kicks in.
Did you see Nick has his hand up? Go ahead, Nick.
I just wanted to clarify, the amendment, can you, what does that give us more than, than we have right now? Because I am ready to go. I thought this was good news coming today. The dates were good. I find it odd that all of a sudden we want to, we kind, I look at it as we missed our opportunity. I tried negotiating harder terms early on and everyone, you know, I was the odd man out. Now we want to start negotiating firmer terms when we have everything we want and ready to go. I find it odd. But what, what are we gaining with the amendment that isn't already in the redevelopment agreement today that we can't get out if they don't meet these dates?
Certainty. I mean, you get certainty if they don't meet these dates, that the contract is over, you don't have to convey the property and you can move on to another developer. Otherwise, you know, we're in a, we're in a continual monitoring process, and it's not to suggest that they wouldn't get the work done, but, you know, if for some reason they don't, we may end up in court, you know, to declare that they're, that we have a right to terminate. This is a pretty, a pretty easy fix, and I know, you know, we don't like necessarily doing another agreement, but I think that it's a substantial concession by the developer, and I think it gives the city certainty, if this doesn't happen, you don't have to pay me, or you don't have to pay Steve to go to court and fight about whether, you know, they've been working as quickly as they should have. It's just there in black and white.
All right, well, I would support moving ahead with that then.
Dan?
If we're asking for an amendment, if we're asking for another, an agreement, it needs to be one that all 14 of us agree with then. We shouldn't make you go through the exercise of doing one of these things if it's not going to pass. But it should have all the teeth in it that everybody wants? Is that included per day, if he's late, kind of thing? Which, what number hurts you? Is it $10,000 a day, $5,000 a day? Well, I'm, 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 I'm serious, because if you're late by a day, I'd like the first day payment to go to the food pantry. The rest of it, we'll, we'll keep. If you're late by a day, I'm okay with one day late, that's fine. Because a lot of people are going to get fed. No, seriously, it needs to be a 14 to 0, if we ask you to do this.
It's more allowing him to buy the days than being late, because you don't want to confuse the issue that, you know, he just pays the fine, if you will, and then he gets the extra days. It rolls on. I mean, and maybe the, the more appropriate place for liquidated damages is at the end, if he doesn't deliver on time. I mean, that's typical under a construction contract.
And so, from a procedural standpoint, if we, if we ask for this amendment, and we vote on the thing, and it, and it dies on the floor, what do we do then?
I suppose your next step would be, you know, to, to vote to send the notice of termination.
Which he can still cure.
Right.
It's not going to accomplish anything, I'm with you, Dan. I mean, it's just...
Huge waste of time.
We, we're much better off having this thing be, meet the date, or we're done.
I like that.
And then, that is stronger than what we have right now.
That sounded like a motion.
Well, and I have one more question before we, before we get to that point, because I think if we're having no, you know, no cure available, if they miss those two dates, are there also no damages that we have to pay there?
Yeah, oh yeah.
That's correct.
There would be no outlay by the city at that point. So I mean, that's another big, second item, which I think hurts them more than 10 grand a day if they're late a day or two. So, you know, I think that that's where I think we need to go. And, believe me, I, I'm sure that there will be a line behind me when I say that if that's true, that's the date certain. And that will be a date certain because we're going to write it that way. And we learned something going through this RDA process here, that those dates certain. And Joe, to your point of, you know, other people developing and doing things, we went through this with the last RDA that we had for Walgreens.
Yeah.
And how long that would get done. And I think one of the things that we learned from that is we need somebody like that that sits over there, that that's his job to go through the RDA and write things into it. There are things in this RDA that I don't think will end up in the next ones, because I don't think there's a developer that's willing to give those things up. The SSA, the, the making upfront payments on, on the tax payments on this. I mean, there's a lot of things that are in this RDA that I don't think we're ever going to get in another one. So, again, that all plays into where I think we're at right now. And if we're going to do this, I think everybody needs to be aware that if we don't pass an amendment here, and we go to termination, we have two choices on termination. Pay him what he's already spent, and we're done with it. Or, send the notice of termination and wait and see if he cures it.
So we're asking for the first unanimous vote on this project?
Doesn't have to be unanimous.
I, I don't, I don't know that it'll ever be unanimous, Dan.
From a philosophical standpoint though, it'd be great if we...
Yeah, it would be great if we had that, but I can guarantee you that I know that there will not be a unanimous vote on this or anything, even, you know, termination. When we get to that point, I don't know that that's going to be a unanimous vote.
We had, we had to corral the yeses and the noes to agree to do an amendment. I kind of feel like we should get behind this amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I would appreciate that, because I think it also puts the teeth in there that we, up to this point, have not had. As we sit here and discuss this and talk about dates that haven't been met, I think that that's really important, that we all know that there's dates here that are involved in this, and it's not going to happen any faster if we do it any other way, other than terminate it without cause and pay for it. And I don't think anybody wants to do that. So I think the reality of this is, if we're going to move forward, we have to go with a proposed amendment, or an amendment that we make and we are okay with, because I think we put a lot more conditions on it than just moving the dates and saying, "We can do it." And, you know, I'm hopeful that if that truly goes through and we do that, that we know that this will benefit the town.
Yeah.
I mean, I truly believe that, regardless of what everybody else thinks about what it looks like, or the size of it, scope of it, whatever. It's really going to benefit the town. In the end, 20, 30 years from now, there will be a difference. So, I don't see any other hands, and I don't see anything else, so I'm going to make a motion that we direct staff to put together the proposed amendment on the One Washington Place schedule of dates, with the first two dates of 1/5/22 and 3/6/22, which would be a no cure termination if they're not met.
Same with 4/9/22.
And I would say the, yeah, I agree.
And the same with 4/9? My, my only thing with that is, does 4/9 then already is the transfer of property?
Well, we, we would word it so that it'd be before the transfer.
Okay, and that's the main thing, is I think that, I don't want to see us in the situation where we transfer property and then terminate the agreement, and then have somebody else own the property after we terminated the agreement with...
You're one...
I don't want to be in that situation.
Dan, what I'm looking at on that 4/9 is developer to issue notice to proceed and developer to finalize construction contracts. Those are the two dates that he's got in white on 4/9.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with transfer property. I would look at the white dates in, in the last column.
Okay. And then the next question I have for our staff is, the 9/7 date, you think you can have all that done and in, in an amendment legally, legally figured out and correct?
I think so.
By, by 9/7?
By 9/7.
And have it to us on the Friday before, so we can all read it?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean...
Do we have to have something next week? For COW, so then we approve it on...
So, you were never obligated to take something through committee the whole first, but it is the normal process of things? It's not unprecedented for things to be taken?
Right, directly to council. My, I guess my thing is, is I want to make sure everything passes whatever legal requirements they want to put on it. And to do that in a week and get it back to us, I don't know if that's realistic.
Yeah, to get it in your packets and that for the COW, I think would be extremely tough.
And I'd rather have it right than have us make them...
Yes, but the 7th is the date that I was shooting for, not, not a COW meeting.
So, maybe by next Tuesday, we have the principal agreement that is basically saying, "Yes, we agree these dates, and yes, you're agreeing," and maybe you're, you can even say that right now, that you agree that those are drop-dead dates.
Yeah, I, I have no objection to these dates in white that, that are shown. Admittedly, the only confusion that I'm hearing is the dates that I can, days that I can buy, are they at the end, as David has suggested? Are they days that I am buying on for these respective lines? Or, you know, I've, I've heard a debate, I don't know, maybe you guys have it straight as to whether the, the council does or doesn't want those, but I've, I've heard different people say different things, so.
Here's my proposal. I say that there's no buying of days ahead of time. And if construction delays cause penalties, if you're not meeting those finalized construction days, those are penalties that then you're paying out at the end of the project. That's my proposal.
Yeah, I'd rather do that than give him the ability to do that. I mean, that, he's the problem solver, he can figure out how to get things done according to the dates that are there, or they pay for him at the end.
I agree with, I agree with Mark on his recommendation of some penalties at the end if there's construction dates not met.
Are we going to go by the RDA Third Agreement dates? Or are we going to go by his proposed amendment, which is...
I think we go by the new dates.
Yeah, if we're, if we're going to push it back and allow that to happen, it's going to go from the date of the amendment.
That's what I get for being a nice guy.
Keenan?
And would you, would you say like, liquidated damages right at the end? Is that, it's probably the easiest way to do it?
We're going to liquidate damages before the last RDA was approved, is all we're saying. Because now he's giving us days ahead of schedule. So instead of having the garage completed on 4/9 of 2025, he's going to have it done 3/24 of 25.
Yeah.
So, what is that? I mean, I don't even understand that.
I'm, I'm not sure if that, you know, the right message, where he's put together a more aggressive schedule, it's a little bit...
We already, because, yeah, we already have an agreement.
Right.
And now he's saying he's going to beat those days, so we're going to penalize him if he comes in at the original days? I don't, I don't...
It's up to you guys.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Up to you guys, certainly.
So are we, what, two weeks ahead at the end?
So if it's delayed by, if the dates go beyond the, the 3rd amendment, then there's... Yeah, 15, whatever, yeah. If the dates go beyond the 3rd Amendment dates on completion, then the penalties start to kick in. That's giving a buffer. Keenan had something to say.
I had a question about the, the dates prior to the green stuff. Are all the, the new proposed ones, are these ones that our staff and Shodin has agreed upon? Or are these just number of days and dates just from Shodin?
The first two, I would, I'll jump in and say that the first two, the per the 3rd Amendment, and per the 3rd Amendment with financing, extension, paragraph 104, those dates were generally in agreement with staff. The last, the proposed amendment was Shodin proposed dates, negotiated dates.
So our staff didn't sit around and ask like, you guys to maximize those, to get closer to where we should be now?
No, what we asked him to do was make them as realistic, but as short as possible. So whereas in the original agreement's time periods might have been conservative and, and say, "Oh, you know, if something happens, you know, we will have this buffer," I asked him to take out the buffers that they felt that they could live with and still meet the timeline. And so this was the response that they came back to us with in truncating some of what the original time periods were, to make them shorter. And also, his proposal that we likewise, on the side of staff, try to expedite our plan review as well, in order to provide the overall project ahead of schedule. And so, Dave sent this to us this morning, and we had an opportunity to review and, and consult about it, and made a few tweaks to the document before we presented it here today.
So we were presented with dates that are comfortable for Shodin, and then we decided we were going to expedite our review.
No.
Never changed. Your review never changed.
It's 90 days throughout the whole timeline.
No, didn't you just say we were talking about reducing our...
He said if you want to, I think he said if you want to accelerate it even a little bit more, that we could reduce, we could turn it around quicker.
Gotcha, so, I left... I'm not happy that we are continuing to just accept whatever they present to us without pushback at all.
Keenan, I guess, I knew where you were going.
Yeah.
But in the end, he's delivering it faster. So, nothing, the water has gone under the bridge, and there's nothing we can do.
I just felt like saying that because I wasn't here prior to that, and Tony has brought that up several times, and so... brought that up several times, and so.
Yeah. I can tell you that there was one discussion on the plan date of, right now you see it as a 1-5-22 delivery date, and there was a question of, "Could I get it back into 2021?" And at that point, I had said no. So there was pushback on both sides. I'm already taking it from 150 down to 120.
I know. That's why I'm just-
Take another five, or six, or three, or whatever it is. It's tough, it's tough to do.
I know it is.
So, just so I'm clear, when we get into the green dates, we would, are you looking for liquidated damages on the green dates, but on the green categories, more appropriately, but looking to use the third amendment dates? That's sort of what I heard.
That's what I heard as well.
Yes. Yeah, that's where, because we already agreed on those completion dates, as far as that. So, if the schedule on it looks like, to me, it's maybe two weeks.
It's not a big-
Yeah, it's not significant. It was just impressive.
Yeah, you know, and I think to penalize him for accelerating that, and I think he picks up, you know, 60 days by my count, in the proposed amendment, by lopping off 30 days on the preparing the bid drawings and obtaining bids, deadline to submit the permit application and notice to proceed, those are both 30 days less. So, I feel like if we're going to do that, then we use the original dates in the third amendment, as far as the penalized dates at the end, for liquidated damages at the end. And did we decide on an amount? You like 10 grand, Dan?
I like that narrative, it's nice and round. You buy a lot of canned goods with it?
I know, and I really like Dan's idea, too, of the first one, if it's one day, just one day, it goes to the food pantry.
You make it 20, and they can buy a new building.
Yeah. Okay, how about this? If liquidated damages at the end, we just give 20% of it to the food pantry, or a minimum of 10 grand? I know we're playing with your money, but that's how we work here.
It's usually based on a per diem, and then you can decide what-
What to do with that. Yeah, you know what, we can do that.
If that's what it takes to build consensus, though, if that's what it takes to build consensus, I'm happy to do that. This is a good idea.
I'd give it all to the food pantry, and they have a building, if he's late. That just means he'd get it done in time, which is okay, too.
So he could morally be late and still be okay.
Exactly. I'd be late all-
My head hurts, Dan.
Is there a motion?
There was.
Yes, there was a motion, and we'll make sure we go back over it again, because Jen will probably kill me if I don't say it again. The motion is to direct staff to create a proposed amendment to the RDA for One Washington Place with the first, or I should say, the four drop-dead dates in the far right-hand column of 1-5-2022, 3-6-2022, 4-9-2022, and then the second 4-9-22. If any of those things are not met, there is a no-cure termination clause within that. And liquidated damages to start on the completion dates that are listed in the green section of $10,000 a day with those dates.
$10,000 a day?
You're going to be ahead of schedule. You're not paying it.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
I guess we're-
So $10,000, they're telling me, is really steep.
We were kind of whispering back and forth here, maybe $1,000 a day would be appropriate. Thousand. I mean, it adds up pretty quick.
Sounds like a fire sale. He's going to be ahead of schedule. He's not paying it anyways. It doesn't matter. Cut a thousand is fine.
Second. Okay, so it's $1,000?
Dave, are you okay with that?
Yes, the only caveat that I would like to have in it is to make sure that those dates are based on an approval on 9-7.
Yes.
So that, should something happen where it gets bumped another couple of weeks, I don't want anybody to be surprised that I'm asking for another couple of weeks.
Right.
And that it's the green dates in the third amendment, not the green dates in the fourth amendment?
Yes, that's what I said.
For the liquidated damages, good.
I did say that.
Okay.
Tony has something to say. Tony, go ahead.
Yep. Yeah, Alan, what was the amount for the wastewater treatment plan per day?
It was, I want to say originally, it was $750 a day, and then at a certain late period, it kicked up to $1,400 per day.
Yeah, I know, they exceeded it so much, there was two different days, or two different amounts.
Like, for the first three months, it was the 750, and then for any day beyond that, it was $1,400 per day.
And we're still arguing about that, right?
Yes.
It's been over a year ago?
Okay.
Multiple years.
We have a motion in a second. We can get a roll call, please.
Could I have clarification on how much it would be a day? Is it 10,000?
It's $1,000 per day.
Thank you.
Did we have any more discussion on this before we have a roll call vote? Okay, roll call.
Okay, and I have that motion made by Wolf, seconded by Knopf.
Yes.
Okay. Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Back? That was no?
No.
Thank you. Knopf?
Aye.
Chantin?
Aye.
And Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 2.
Okay. Thank you to everyone for an extremely long discussion. Thank you, Dave. And I look forward to the next step, September 7th. I'll see you there. Okay, I know I have agenda somewhere here in my notes. Next up is project status. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to cut a long drive.
Thank you.
As much as I would enjoy a large-
Thank you, David.
Okay, so for the administrator's report, I just wanted to make everyone aware that due to the fact that we are going to be closing Houston Street for Windmill City Festival, and then also for the block party, we've decided to open up Water Street between Wilson Street and First Street, and put that outdoor public dining area, and earlier than the normal, to put that furniture away. It was, we had a couple of really great events there this year, but outside of that, it is rarely used for outdoor public dining. And when we close Houston Street, it blocks off access to the north side of the McDonald's parking lot there, and makes it difficult. People would have to go all the way to Batavia Avenue in order to backtrack and try to head east after going there. And we're talking about three days of the festival for this weekend, and then an additional day of festival next weekend. And opening that up allows people to make the, you know, left-hand turns around that block there and get headed east again. And then, as part of our discussions later this year, we can determine whether that's an outdoor public dining area that we want to set up for the season next year, or if we just want to make the outdoor public dining furniture available to organizations who want to close off that street for specific events at that time. Did you have any, did you want to make any comment? No, okay.
And that also opens up parking on both sides of Water Street as well, on the whole block, so that-
Yes.
Especially with downtown festivals, there's going to be people that want to be able to park downtown.
Which is, thank you for bringing that up, because that is another thing that I want to talk about, is that we are going to be doing a huge public communication campaign about it, walk, ride your bike to these festivals, because this weekend, we have both the Batavia Nights, which is three days of concerts in the parking lot that's behind the new Comedy Vault business at 15 East Wilson Street, at the same time as we have the three days of the Windmill City Festival happening on the west side of the river. And so we are expecting huge crowds in our downtown, and so parking will probably be of limited availability. And if you can ride or walk to downtown, you will want to do so. Right now, we have planned for the virtual meeting for the alternative concepts for the dam removal, to be held on September 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's a Wednesday night. I do note that we have a plan commission meeting that night. So, that date, I just want to take a look at whether somehow we can get BATV involved, because we do want to have a live broadcast of that virtual meeting, because that is going to be important, not only for the largest participation possible, we're also going to make a recording of that, because that's going to be the Hitchcock presentation on each one of those different design concepts, and then provide an opportunity for anyone who's participating. We want them to submit questions. Some of them will be answered as time allows during the virtual presentation. And the balance of the questions that we're not able to answer during the presentation will be made part of an FAQ that people can access on the project website. And we also want to host an in-person meeting on September 25th. This will be at the Peg Bond Center, and we hope to be able to set the storyboards right out there on the Riverwalk, so that people can kind of visualize the project as they're talking about it with the folks from Hitchcock Design Group. That is Saturday, September 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Also wanted to let you know that the Park Board is going to be having a special meeting, just to discuss amongst themselves the various alternatives that have been proposed, and that they're inviting Hitchcock Design Group to part of that meeting, to answer any questions that they have about the various concepts. And I would offer to City Council, if you would also like to have that opportunity, to have a discussion amongst yourselves about the various dam alternative concepts, or if you would just like to wait until such time as we receive the feedback from the public commentary.
When was their special meeting?
I do not have a date for that yet. But they did want to have it before the virtual meeting, so should be upcoming soon. I think it might be the week of Labor Day.
I think I'd rather, if we were going to have a meeting, have it after the public comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, except for an idea I drew up, I think we've kind of said all of our stuff, and I don't know that we can-
We've talked enough about it.
What's that?
That we've talked enough about it.
Yeah, and then now we need to hear some other opinions, maybe something out there that we haven't thought of.
So, that was after the public comment?
Fine with me.
Okay.
Quick question.
Yes.
The 9:15, the virtual meeting, and the 9:25 in-person, are those both going to be recorded?
The outdoor one will not be recorded, because people will be, there won't be a specific presentation by Hitchcock Design Group. Instead, that's just kind of going to be them being available, walking from board to board, answering, you know, questions that people have coming up, so it'd be difficult to record that. But we will make sure to widely advertise the recording of the virtual meeting on 9:15, because that's a way, if you're going to provide comments, and you're not at either one of those meetings, we'd say, "Take a look at that presentation first, and then give us your feedback." It's, you know, similar to what the school board did, a nice job of that with their presentations about their facility planning. Any other questions about those discussions? Wanted to let you know that mark your calendars, Mahoney Creek Watershed Planning Public Meeting has been tentatively scheduled for November 16th, prior to the COW meeting. And this meeting will give the public the opportunity to provide feedback on that watershed plan. The roadway resurfacing portion of the city's annual project is underway. Work is occurring on the west side of town first, and then it'll shift over to the east side in coming weeks. And sidewalk gaps have been completed as much as possible at the intersection of Main Street and Batavia Avenue, and the remaining gaps will be completed after the permanent traffic signals are activated. We, in the police department, we're reviewing this for several months of activities, having our in-house social worker, who's been working one day a week at Batavia Police Department since June. Feedback has been very positive thus far. Our one dedicated worker has been working with our officers on Batavia Social Services cases, as well as conducting follow-up on existing Batavia cases. She also attends in-person roll call briefings, and provides periodic refresher training for our sworn officers. Expansion of the amount of contact days may benefit the community, and will be evaluated by PD Command Staff in the near future. And the written exam for sergeant candidates, in order to establish a new list once the current list expires in November, will occur on, actually occurred today, and an oral interview and assessment center will follow the exam in September and October for qualifying candidates. And lastly, I'd like to report that on August 17th, the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners selected Michelle Langston to be promoted to the rank of police sergeant. This promotion was authorized by the mayor, and has been made to fill the vacancy created by the appointment of Eric Blowers to be deputy chief. Sergeant Langston is tentatively scheduled to be sworn in before the city council at the September 7th meeting, and it will be a historic moment, as Michelle is our first female sergeant of the Batavia Police Department. So we look forward to celebrating that. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Does anybody have any questions for Laura? We're still in tonight, not in tomorrow.
Barely.
Okay. Then we will end this meeting here. Well, we'll move into executive session. There will be no action to come out of this meeting.
Actually, with the executive session is not necessary.
We can defer that. It's not urgent.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
No, we can do that next week. I'm good with that. Post adjourned? Post my knob, seconded by Soffa. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
That's the best news we've heard all week, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.